And we're going to start our meeting. This is a regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Middletown pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act and laws of 1975. The public has been notified that the Planning Board will meet on November 6, 2013, at 6:30 PM in the Town Hall. The Middletown Planning Board notified the Aspery Park Press, the Invisended, the Star Letter, and the Two River Times on December 10, 2012. Notice of the meeting was filed with the Township Clerk and posted in Town Hall on December 10, 2012. All notification for this meeting was pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act at least 48 hours prior to this meeting. May I have a salute to the flag? My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. DeVita?
Yes. Mrs. Dowell?
Here.
Mrs. Dowell?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Cordell?
Here.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Mr. Severino?
Here.
Mr. Shiebys?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Happy end. We're administrating that. We have paying vouchers under old business. We have 2012, 2007 American Properties at Middletown under new business. 2013, 900 Scott Rafferty and Byers Subdivision will not be heard tonight. It's airing till December 4th again.
Since this is an open meeting to the public, will the public, anyone in the public, come up forward for any non-agenda items that are not on tonight? If anyone wishes to speak about any non-agenda items, may come up right now. If not, we will start and proceed. Vouching the vouchers, please.
I take motion to vouch for adoption of the number 6, 2013, for a total of $6,136.
Now I have a second.
A second?
All papers?
Aye.
All.
Uh, along the agenda was listed a resolution in the war bonds matter. There was, I had dragged the resolution against denied. We don't have a court on tonight of eligible members to vote on that, so that's going to have to be carried next month. I've talked to the judge, the district clerk, along with the attorney for the plaintiff, and we've asked him to stay in any possible extent, we have no clear date, so that'll be in December meeting, and you have copies of that resolution. At this point, will this hold litigation? Well, I've been asked by a member or two for copies, been on the board, and I don't think we can give any of that out until we would actually adopt our resolution.
Okay, folks, I need a few little meeting minutes for our sober second, 2013.
One paper.
One paper. Okay, we're ready to start with American Properties at Middletown, and I believe we were following.
Yeah, I mean, just so we're all on the same page, and Debbie was timed it up to make a couple copies of the pages in the last transcript. So, at this point in time, Mr. Gazeraski was being cross-examined, Mr. Phillips, and then after that, Mr. Gazeraski was then going to put on his home witnesses. That's a little remark, I think. Is that, is that what the, the, the jurors gave?
Let's go with the first question. If you tell me again, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Phillips is going to be cross-examined.
You told me again, I read through the transcript, and if you recall, I thought last meeting there was a discussion in my cross-examination, and it was probably a traffic accident, but then I didn't afford, I entered into a call-up meeting, Mr. Phillips, dealing with the issue of the harvest land standards he proposed, whether or not federal lane was a required road. And this reference was that first. And on page 102 of the transcript, Mr. Greenspan, there's also a question, and I, and I'd like to read what my understanding was at the place. Jason said, well, I tend to, as you have testified, I'll make sure you have another copy of the section that would help the board, perhaps you could map out where the existing ones, meaning the railroad or the demolition, so that we should see how they lay out in the town plan now, and help you with analysis of what is right now, and I know where the roadways in the American plan is. But I'd like to know as well about that report, whether it's formal or informal, whether it's written or oral, was informed prior to the meeting of procedure. And if it was not, I'll be sure to look at the document, but I think that's stupid, the legal report.
The board has a short memorandum from Mr. Greenspan dated November 1, 2013, which attaches copies of pages from the master plan, as well as a illustration of that map from the master plan.
Listing secondary roads and primary roads.
So there are, I mean, and the memo is very, very, I don't know, I mean, there's nothing in it other than saying, here it is.
I've got a recent copy of that.
Well, your, your register's maps.
That's correct.
But we, we have copies.
Okay.
So we have extra copies. We're here. These are, all is really living, as Mr. Greenspan has gone through the master plan and copied the pages that he purchased. Other than the short cover sheet, they're attached, those seem to be public items.
Well, that's an act, but my understanding was, is that he was to comment on Mr. Greenspan, but that's not intention, and it's not intention.
Well, at this point in time, Mr. Greenspan has gone through, he's made copies, you have copies of what the board has. It's not the board's intention to put Mr. Greenspan on as a witness and start elaborating. The document says what it says. If you have, if your planner wants to draw conclusions from it, or if it was different than this, both of them.
Right. You say, at this point, the client is going to like cross-examine, uh, Mr. Phillips.
Mr. Phillips, this morning, previously, your hand or?
I don't know.
Did you like mic or not?
We, and it works. We have a wireless microphone, we're in the 21st century.
We have the pipeline itself, but you just sent it over there. We have to be all over that issue. As a housekeeping measure, if you want a chair, we can pull one down. You must, yeah, okay. You have the mic alone. We have an easel pocket. What was it? It's over there. Mr. Bracken? Here. We were standing here, the easel was over there. Now the easel was there.
Mr. Gazeraski, do you? Do you? For the record, I touched on the, uh, exhibit which is marked as A3, which I believe is a depiction, color site plan of a project in question, and I would ask you, Mr. Phillips, whether or not you are familiar with that exhibit, and it does in fact reflect the proposed project, which is the subject of discussion this evening, and the application and the question.
Yes and yes.
Could you tell me, please, when you were first retained by the applicant to give testimony with regard to this matter?
I was retained, Mr. Gazeraski, in the latter part of 2012.
Okay. Now, my recollection is, is that when this matter first began, Mr. Coco was called upon to give pledging testimony, and you were not, and I think that was during the year of 2013, but I will stand corrected with regard to that. But is your testimony that you were retained prior to the first hearing that was conducted in this matter?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, when you were retained, was that prior to or subsequent to the plan itself being prepared?
Um, I think I was retained at a point at which the plan had been prepared internally by my client, but had not been formally submitted to the board.
All right. Did you have any input into the preparation of this plan and the layout of the roadways, as well as the buildings and the amenities with regard to the plan?
No.
So basically, the plan was presented, was prepared, and then prepared to present it to you for your review, to give testimony with regard to?
Yeah, the only qualification would be that it was prepared for me prior to the application being formally filed with the Planning Board.
Okay. Now, as a result of that, did you have any comments which were either written or oral that were made to the applicant, wherein changes were made as a result of your comments?
No.
Were there any comments that you made?
Uh, the comments that I made were, when I was initially retained, was, I asked my client whether or not the plans conformed to the underlying zoning, which they indicated to me that it did. When I reviewed the plans, I reviewed basically the site plan and the zoning schedule and the zoning ordinance for Middletown Township, and at that point, I had confirmed that the plans about to be presented did appear to conform to the underlying RMF3 zoning.
Now, when you were doing that, did you make any effort to determine what in fact were the existing arterial roads, collector roads, and/or local roads which were existing in proximity to the site question?
Um, only with regard to the issue of the, there is a zoning requirement with regard to setbacks based on street classification, only in that respect.
Okay. Now, but you say only in that respect, were you told that this was a collector road, or did you independently make a determination that this was a local road?
Well, I think it was presumed by my client that it was a collector road, but I independently looked at the zoning ordinance and the master plan, and I, and in my opinion, it was indeed, Taylor was indeed a local street, in my opinion, not a collector road.
Okay. Perhaps you misspoke, I thought you said that your client had determined that it was a collector.
Local, I'm sorry.
Did you mean to say local or local? Okay, fine.
Local street.
All right. Now, what, uh, what authorities or statutes or treatises, if any, did you refer to in coming to that conclusion?
I referred to the zoning ordinance in the master plan.
Okay. So were you present when Mr. Troutman was cross-examined at the last hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, do you recall his being cross-examined with regard to other articles or regulations or statutes concerning how in fact roads are determined to be local, collector, or arterial?
I remember the questioning, but I can't say I can remember the substance of the questioning and the response.
As a planner, you take into consideration, for example, residential site improvement standards?
With regard to whether, what this road should be classified as vis a vis the setback, would I take into account?
No, 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 that wasn't my question. I mean, you've been learning with what the RSIS is and what its standards were.
I am.
And what is it?
Residential site improvement standards.
Now, are those standards applicable to all municipalities within the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
So if in fact the residential site improvement standard mandates that, for example, a certain type of roadway have a particular width, or in determining what the necessary parking is for condominium units or apartment units, if in fact the local ordinance is contrary to the RSIS, the RSIS has privacy, does it not?
With respect to those particular examples that you gave, or the parking and roadway width, I would agree with you.
Now, with regard to determining whether or not a roadway is a local road, a collector road, or an arterial road?
Absolutely not.
Would you show me where it says that at the RSIS?
I'm not, my answer has nothing to do with where it says that the RSIS. My answer has to do with what the zoning ordinance and the master plan says, vis a vis the local and collector, particularly collector roadways.
Well, but tell me where it says that, does it say that in the master plan or the zoning ordinance?
It says, the zoning ordinance has a definition section, and the definition section in the ordinance has a definition for a collector street. That definition references the street classifications in the master plan.
Show me in the zoning ordinance.
Let me, there's your answer, just watch it.
Go ahead, please, gentlemen. You're stepping on each other. You're making it harder for you. So, one time, let the people finish with their sentences. Not to pick on them.
You're interrupting him. I did, and I apologize. I think you're finishing your answer.
Yeah, let me just repeat, in case, court reporter, and, the zoning ordinance has a definition section. In that definition section, there's a definition of collector street or roadway, and it basically references back to the designation in the master plan. I then went to the master plan, and in the 2004 master plan, in the circulation element, there are street classifications. They are listed, arterial, there's two types of arterials, there's collectors, and then there's local roadways. Go to the master plan and look under the arterials and the collector, you do not find any reference to existing Taylor Lane, okay? Ergo, everything that's not classified other than a local street in the master plan is classified as a local street. To me, I look at the zoning ordinance, I look at the master plan, I look at the requirements for RMF3 with regard to setbacks, clearly it references the master plan.
Mr. Let's start from the beginning. Do you have a copy of the definition section of the zoning ordinance?
I don't have it.
You're saying that in, in the definition sections, there are specific definitions of what a local road is, what a collector road, and what a arterial road is?
I'm saying there's a definition of a collector road, I also believe there's a definition of an arterial road, I'm not certain there's a definition of a local road or street.
Okay. Now, you said there's a reference back to the master plan, is that not correct?
That's correct.
Now, in the master plan, I believe the, the last date we say was revised, or there was a reexamination of the master plan, it was in the year of 2004?
The last master plan where they basically deal comprehensively with the circulation element was 2004. As you're probably aware, Mr. Gazeraski, there were a number of amendments to the master plan since that date, and there was a reexamination, I think, just several years ago. So that's all part and parcel, as you're well aware, of the, of the master plan document itself, but the reference to the roadway classifications was 2004, and in my review of all the subsequent amendments and reexaminations, there was no, nothing to change those classifications in terms of roadways that are listed in the 2004 master plan.
Now, prior to your giving that analysis, I guess now we're going back to the year 2012, correct? Which is when you claimed first did that?
Correct.
Now, at that time, did you have occasion to review any surveys and/or deeds or prior subdivisions which identified Taylor Lane as being a private roadway?
No.
Did you personally have any knowledge of whether or not the existing Taylor Lane was either a private or a public roadway?
I had no specific knowledge of whether it was a private roadway, or whether or not any parties had, or claimed they had private rights to the roadway. What I did do was look at the reference in the master plan, and at least in my professional opinion, the master plan is treating Taylor Lane as a public roadway, because it's recommending improvements to Taylor Lane.
Well, where in the master plan does it identify Taylor Lane as being a public roadway?
As I mentioned, it doesn't specifically identify it as public or private. What I'm saying is, it's imposing recommendations to the roadway.
Well, let me ask, let me ask, how is this recognizable? Let me ask you this, isn't in fact Taylor Lane legally, through deed references and law, is a private roadway? I mean, this body doesn't have the power by way of its master plan to say that it's public rather than a private roadway, does it?
That's, that's a, that's a legal question, and I think it's been before this board. My understanding is Mr. Gorman has advised the board in terms of its review of this application, that it should treat Taylor Lane as a de facto public roadway, whether or not there are any private rights to that roadway, remains to be seen. That's my understanding of how this board is reviewing this application in terms of Taylor Lane.
I thought Mr. Gorman also stated that, and in fact, this board would approve this application, it would have to be determination by a court of law, if it's so challenged, whether it's a private or a public roadway.
Mr. Gorman didn't say that.
What did Mr. Gorman say? Can I add a clarification as to that, exactly what you were about?
You said, yeah, I'll clarify this. I don't think there has to be determination by a court of law. What I said is, this body can't make that distinction. We have no power to do that, to hear my client complain, we have no power to do that. So if someone wants to go to court, go to court. But there's no requirement that it move to court.
Well, my recollection was, and I'll stand corrected, and the record will obviously speak for itself, but that was to be a condition of an approval of what we're given, that to be a determination as to whether or not Taylor Road were a public or a private roadway.
I don't recall that.
Okay. Well, it's your, it's your determination that this board will not opine as to whether it's a public or a private roadway.
That's fair.
Okay. Now, at the time this was done, in the year 2004, putting aside whether or not Taylor Lane was a public or a private roadway, are you aware of the fact that in 2004, there were portions of Taylor Lane which were unpaid?
In 2004?
Yeah.
I wasn't aware or unaware of that in 2004.
Now, in 2004...
I didn't inspect Taylor Lane in 2004. I did not inspect Taylor Lane in 2004.
Now, in 2004, there were not, there was not in fact an approved and/or a constructed multifamily housing.
Well, I'm going to ask you to take the time out, I'm going to object here. We put forth Mr. Phillips for certain pledging testimony. He testified as a trapped, he didn't testify at all as a Taylor Lane. So I'm not sure about this line of questioning, where it's headed, but Mr. Phillips didn't put himself forth as an expert on Taylor Lane.
Now, but what he did do is that he put himself forth as an expert by saying, he made a determination that the proposed Taylor Lane is a local road, not a collector road.
You're jumping back and forth, and you do that very well, Mr. Gazeraski. You started questioning with regards to whether or not this was a collector or a local road, and you morphed into whether it's public or private. Well, what's wrong with that is we have a witness who gave testimony on the relevant money on a certain topic. You're allowed to cross-examine him on that topic. So let's try and keep it focused. If you're talking about whether Taylor Lane is public or private, Mr. Phillips didn't study that, and he didn't put himself forth on that issue with his pledging testimony.
Yeah, he just testified to that, the cross-examination, as to how he came up with his review of the zoning ordinance, as to determine the proper setbacks on the proposed Taylor Lane.
As to whether the road was local or collector, not public or private.
Let me, let me rephrase the question. And to your knowledge, in 2004, the then-existing Taylor Lane, were there approximately 240 townhouses which were located on what would be the east and west side of the existing Taylor Lane?
I don't know if there were or there weren't, but I would venture to speculate that there weren't.
Okay. Do you know whether or not in 2004, there was a plan before this planning board, or any of the board, that attached to Middletown, which had granted approval to the property order for the construction of approximately 250 multifamily units on the east and west side of Taylor Lane?
I'm not aware of any approval dating back to 2000.
Now, let's talk about the proposed Taylor Lane. You're saying that the only basis for your testimony establishing the required setbacks on the proposed Taylor Lane are the references made in the master plan of the township of Middletown?
No, that's not what I said. I said that I looked first at the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance has a definition of collector, and I think arterial roadways, which references back to the master plan. I then looked at the master plan, and Taylor Lane is not mentioned under either the collector or the arterial. Ergo, to me, it's classified, it should be classified for setback purposes as a local street.
Okay. Now, I've said that, when you're making that reference, that has to do with the then-existing Taylor Lane?
Well, it has to do with the then-existing Taylor Lane, but also in the 2004 master plan, there's a clear policy mandate or policy directive that Taylor Lane is to be improved, consistent with the improvements that are parved and parcel of this proposal. That's very clear, that that's in the 2004 master plan, and for whatever reasons, the board didn't choose at that time, knowing there was a recommendation to improve it, to reclassify it for anything other than a local street?
Well, let me ask this question, I'll get to another topic. How is it possible to classify a street which is, number one, not in existence, and number two, may never come into existence?
Well, I would take exception to your characterization that it's not in existence. It's referenced in the master plan as a street that is recommended for improvement. I don't know how you can say it's not in existence, it's referenced in the, in the policy document.
Let's go back to that one step there. When you say that in the master plan, federal lane is a street which is referenced for improvements, are you referring to the existing federal lane, or are you referring to the proposed Taylor Lane?
I, my reading of the master plan in terms of the policy directive to upgrade is referencing the existing Taylor Lane.
Okay. Now, it would be true to that, if in fact they are referencing the existing Taylor Lane, and turning it from a rather narrow width roadway serving properties to the south of Route 35, would that not indicate to you that what is in this event, and number one, the existing Taylor Lane isn't sufficient to handle the traffic which is existing and proposed, and that in fact, Taylor Lane must be improved to handle the traffic coming out to it?
Not necessarily. Those, those factors are not stated in the master plan vis a vis the upgrade of Taylor Lane. The one specific thing that's mentioned in the upgrade is the irregular angle which Taylor Lane basically intersects with the, with the jugular.
Having said that, then, according to your testimony, there was no reference whatever in the master plan as to what the proposed Taylor Lane will be?
I'm not understanding your question, what will be in terms of what?
Well, you just said that when you read the master plan, in terms of the improvements to be made, those are the improvements made to the existing Taylor Lane. That was your testimony.
The Planning Board had every opportunity, if the Planning Board at the time knew what the improvements were, they had every opportunity in the master plan to basically change the classification of the roadway to reflect whatever the improvements were.
I understand.
But we finished. They chose not to do that. They left it classified as a local street.
Just so we're, just so we're clear with your testimony, in the testimony you're getting, when you're speaking in terms of improvements to federal lane as referenced in the master plan, you're saying that that was with reference to the then-existing Taylor Lane?
He answered that. He did, you asked that, he said yes. He said it was the existing Taylor Lane.
Right. So going from that, that would mean then, that in the master plan, there's no reference whatever as to what the, what a newly aligned or a newly proposed Taylor Lane would be, local... would be, local, collector, or arterial?
I don't read it that way. But as I said, the board had every opportunity. It's very commonplace in regulation elements of master plans to have classifications that represent existing as well as improved improvements in the roadway. There's no such change in the classification. And the board at the time in making the recommendation knew that there was a proposal to upgrade. I don't have to make that any clearer.
Now, just going back generically to your position as a planner. I think when you first were qualified, you did in fact testify that you are a licensed professional planner, that you appear in many municipalities throughout the state.
Correct. That's accurate.
I know that several members of your firm serve as municipal planners in municipalities. And my question would be, do you as an individual, not your firm, but as an individual, do you serve as a planner for any of the municipalities?
Yes.
What municipalities are they?
Marsh Township, Fort Lee, Waldwick. I do work, specific work for towns in the area of redevelopment, including Montclair, Bloomfield. They're probably obvious. Those are the ones that come to mind.
Okay, now, would you agree with me that there is in fact a distinction between serving as a planner for a municipality as compared to serving as a planner, an expert planner, or either an applicant to a project or an objector?
I'm not sure what you mean by distinction.
Well, and with regard to serving as a planner or an applicant, you are basically advocating his position, are you not?
I may not be.
I'm going to object, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Gorman, that Mr. Phillips is a qualified expert. He answers his questions as a qualified expert. They don't understand what you're suggesting.
It goes to his credibility as to, I mean, he is not here as an independent planner who's been retained by the board. He is here retained, just as my planner is retained by an applicant to put forth planning testimony. I think that's where I gave the cross-examination.
Well, I think we're real estate lawyer. He's being paid by the applicant. He was guarded by the applicant. He's got a professional license and professional obligations.
Well, let me ask you this question, Mr. Phillips. Planning as compared to engineering? Planning is a word, is a subjective discipline as in not as compared to engineering, which is empirical?
I'm not sure I classify it the same way as Mr. Gazeros.
Well, you're basically giving it a painting.
Planning is not totally subjective.
This is totally subjective. Is that a subjective?
It's not. There are instances where planners may not come to the same conclusion on planning now. That doesn't mean that it's totally subjective or even if it's classified as subjective.
Let me ask you this. Were you present with Mr. Koko and Mr. Trautman here, were you not?
Yes.
And I believe the testimony was that Route 35 going north and south is a primary arterial road?
I believe that was the classification, yes.
And you're aware of the fact, were you not, that a primary arterial road as compared to lesser roadways is a very heavy traffic road?
You know, I know Mr. Shemado was basically saying he's making movements in his chair. But these are not really within the scope of his direct testimony. I mean, if it means to something, okay, but he's not a traffic expert. He didn't design the roads. So it's going to come back and relate to a planning issue.
Mr. Phillips, we know you didn't design the roadways, but did you take into consideration the nature of the roadways in preparation for giving your planning testimony?
My testimony really didn't deal with the example you gave of Route 35 being a primary arterial. It really wasn't relevant to my particular testimony with regard to this site plan and the zoning complaints.
Did you give any consideration whatever to the amount of traffic which could be coming on this newly allowing Taylor Lane?
From the perspective of my testimony with regard to the zoning complaints, no.
Okay, now, looking at the plan itself, and you familiarize yourself with the zoning ordinance dealing with the requirements of a minimum of 30 acres, have you not?
There is a gross lot area requirement of 30 acres.
And we all know that with regard to this plan, basically, the corpus or the land itself is being divided by what would be a public roadway.
That's the proposal, yes.
Right, so effectively, we're going to have a portion of this property which is located on the east and then a sub-portion which is located on the west. Correct?
Correct.
Now, did you give any consideration to, or did the applicant discuss with you at all the location of the amenities portion on this plan being located solely in the west of the east portion of the traffic?
I had no particular discussions of that issue with the applicant, no.
Now, in your experience, and I take it that you've given planning testimony on other occasions dealing with multifamily projects such as this? Have you not townhouse projects, malloral projects, projects which are supposedly homogeneous?
I'm not sure what you mean by supposedly homogeneous. Well, how is your testimony on multifamily?
Right, in other words, a project operating as a single entity where all parties will have the benefit of the amenities being profitable?
Yes.
Now, do you think that it is sound planning in a project such as this, where you're having a significant number of families living on the east of the east side of the proposed new Taylor Lane with young children and the like, to have to cross over newly proposed Taylor Lane in order to give to the amenities?
I don't think it's inconsistent with sound planning, no.
It's not? Is it consistent with the other types of townhouse projects which are located throughout the township of Middletown?
I didn't study for purposes of my testimony before this board, this application, all the other multifamily projects in Middletown or elsewhere.
Did you look at any at all?
In Middletown? No. Not with regard to this particular application of my testimony on this application, no. I'm familiar with projects. I'm familiar with other projects. I have, I will tell you that I've seen other projects where...
I'm asking about projects in Middletown. Like if you want to...
Let him finish his answer.
My question is dealt with Middletown.
Can he finish that answer?
As a general rule, you're stepping on his answers. So I know you have an open coming, and we have to let Mr. Phillips finish his answers. Because otherwise, the record's not going to mean much if it's cut off in the middle of the conversation. The only thing I was going to proffer and represent is that I have, over the course of my professional career, been involved with applications, multifamily applications, which were separated by public road and the amenities were on one side of the road. Can I say that it's done all the time? No, but I have seen other examples over the course of my career. I can't tell you whether it was Middletown or somewhere else, but I'm telling you, this is something that I haven't seen for the first time.
Okay, having said that, did you tell us whether or not that roadway which bisected those units in these other projects, were they local roads, collector roads, or arterial roads?
I don't recall. I can't.
Okay, just one last question. Are you aware of the fact that a portion of this property lies within the township of Holme?
Yes.
Have you formed an opinion as to whether or not for this project to be fully compliant approved, the applicant was also making application to the township of Holme?
My understanding based on the plans itself is that there's nothing that's proposed within the physical limits of the Holme portion of the property. If that's indeed true, it's my opinion that the applicant would not have to make a formal application to the township.
Well, what is in fact portions of the Holme property are being utilized through example to establish density?
I think that issue's already been ruled upon based on the, early in the proceedings, there was an issue as to whether or not the lot per se included the Holme portion. And I know that was correspondence, and I believe that Mr. Gorman ruled or advised the board that the entire lot should be included based on ground case law. That's my understanding.
What about in fact portions of the property located in Holme are utilized to establish transition areas and/or buffer areas that are part of this project?
That wouldn't change my opinion.
Why?
Because there's no physical work or disturbance going on.
You're saying in order for, in order to bring Holme in, there must be an actual physical structure upon it?
There must be some proposal to change basically the area, the landscape within Holme, at least in my view.
Do you know what, now, in your review of the plans, there was any provisions for earthwork taking place in the township of Holme by way of grading or moving or planting and so on?
I'm not aware of any, but again, that's specific.
Are you familiar with the recent appellate decision, I'll refer to it as Kinderkurbak, which addressed this very issue?
Which decision?
Kinderkurbak.
I can't say.
Again, D E R M A C K.
I can't say that I, without another citation, that's not doing it for me.
Okay, fine. I have other questions.
Well, there's no further questioning of Mr. Phillips. He's finished. By right of election, and again, this has been over a number of different meetings, by right of election, the public had the opportunity to cross the county's roof. They had the opportunity to cross the roof as they appeared. So with that completion of Mr. Phillips' cross-examination, we're now at a stage where the objectors can place their own affirmative testimony on the record with their own witnesses.
I was at the mall with Mr. Gorman. I need to question that.
Absolutely. I'm going to sit back and get your room. Your full name, please, for the record?
I'm going to do that for you. Delap, W O L, N I A.
Your testimony about the word truth, culture, and everything.
Yep.
Just a point, just a few other questions. Just give us first a bit of your educational background.
I went to Rutgers University, graduated with bachelor's degree in civil engineering.
What year was that?
1964.
And upon graduating from Rutgers, what did you do then?
Well, after that, I went in the Air Force, was an instructor and base civil engineer, and I was going to work in traffic engineering as well.
So when you were in the Air Force, I take it you were an officer?
Yeah.
And your duties in the Air Force had to do with engineering?
Correct.
That'd be civil engineer?
Yes, I was a base civil engineer for approximately a year, and I got a commendation medal for various actions in severe sports in the U.S.
Now, I will accept your witness's background. He has been here before.
Are you picking them up okay?
If you can speak loud.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's close, I mean, if you... I accept this credentials, you know, we both, this is work, this is... Yeah, it is, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, it's hard sometimes. It's difficult in this setting to take down and transcribe. So if there's any question about missing or whatever, just please let us know, and we'll go back and try to make sure that you've got a complete record. And if that might work better, great, but it's, do best you can, either slower or clearly so the court can get down every word. Otherwise, we're going to wind up with kind of gaps or phonetic spelling and things like that in the record. Somehow, I think we're going to need...
Yes, a question, Mr. Chairman. Is Mr. Littlemorey being proffered as an expert in civil engineering? And is that what the board is accepting as qualifications?
I'm not sure. Can I make a suggestion? We go back a separate... I know Mr. Littlemorey has appeared before here, but I think when he was... He previously appeared before the board, and he was qualified as a traffic engineer. So I think the proffer today is that he be an expert in civil engineering as well as traffic. Well, so, let's just put a few things on our record. You have a P E from the state of Jersey?
Yeah.
And you've been practicing as a civil engineer in the state of Jersey now for some 50 years?
Probably 40 years or more.
And you routinely do testimony before boards?
Yes.
Courts?
Yes.
And you represent some municipalities?
Yeah.
And you've taken courses in traffic engineering?
We represent various boards in traffic engineering and have opened in engineers as well in various municipalities.
And I'm sure Mr. Shemado is generally familiar with your background and experience. So do you have any questions about whether or not he's an expert in civil engineering and traffic engineering?
No, I just wondered if I had a record.
So your proffering is an expert in both civil engineering and traffic, with an emphasis in traffic engineering?
Yes.
Is that fair enough, Mr. Shemado? Do you need objection, or do you have any questions on board here?
Yeah, I actually do have a question or two. Do you have any degrees or qualifications or certifications in traffic engineering?
No. I'm a member of the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and I worked on various, as a traffic engineer, various things from the interstate. I was the I T representative for the I-95 corridors studies. I was the representative to settle the interstate truck differences between New York and New Jersey on Route 9W.
My question is, Littlemorey, with my older experience and his standard experience in four years of a long time in the field, I just ask if he had any certifications or qualifications, to put degrees or qualifications in traffic engineering specifically?
No, because there were no traffic engineers when I started doing traffic engineering, and no certifications when I started doing traffic engineering.
But there are now, correct?
There are now, yes. I never really bothered getting one.
Thank you.
Mr. Littlemorey, why are you coming here this evening? Just tell us briefly, what steps you took to familiarize yourself with the site, the plans, as well as the municipality?
Basically, I went through the various items that were in the files that was submitted to the board, reviewed them. And I also reviewed the various technical literature from ASHTO, from I T, from NJDOT, the RSIS, various legislation to determine what the definitions of roadways would be and how roadways were defined in different codes and different ways.
Now, you were proffering, were you not, when, let me refresh that question. With regard to the self-serve application, were you either present at hearings when the witnesses for the applicant testified? Or if you weren't present, did you read the transcripts with regard to that testimony?
Yes, I believe I read the transcript of some of the meetings that I was here at, while to refresh my memory.
Now, were you present at the last hearing when Mr. Koko and Mr. Trautman were cross-examined by me?
Yes.
Now, with Mr. Koko, one of the areas which I cross-examined him had to do with the construction of the detention basin as well as the test boards and pins which were taken on the side of Route 41 testimony?
Yes.
Now, with regards to Mr. Trautman, I questioned him with regard to the roadways that were existing within the site as well as those roadways which are in existence surrounding the site.
Correct.
Now, do you recall the testimony of Mr. Trautman where he stated that the basis for his making a decision that Taylor Lane was a local road as compared to all others was based upon what was reflected in the master plan?
Yeah.
Now, you recall my also questioning Mr. Trautman with regard to whether or not he had read the lawyer article, I'm sure you read it at one point in time, but asking whether or not specifically with regard to this site, did he give consideration to any other publications or periodicals or regulations or statutes that apply to or define classifications of streets?
Yeah.
And his testimony was that he had not?
Correct.
Now, in your preparing for giving testimony this evening, did you in fact consult documents other than... other than just the national?
Yes.
What documents did you refer to?
I went through the ASHTO documents on the policy.
What?
I, I'm sorry, the ASHTO document, ASHTO, American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials.
And what did you glean or determine from reading the ASHTO document?
Well, basically, what I did is I went through various documents about the definitions, and the definition in the ASHTO document on page 12 said this.
Now, just, I questioned you one thing. Number one, you tend to speak low, you're a soft walker, and number two, you sometimes tend to speak pretty quickly, so since the board is listening to this definition, you just take your time, speak loudly and slowly.
Certainly. The collector's street system provides both land access service and traffic circulation.
I do have an objection, I think we have sort of procedural issue here, I have to see what Mr. Gazarovski is doing with his case, I just want to make this a lot early. Mr. Gazarovski has a pending appeal before the zoning board. His appeal, the zoning officers quote-unquote decision on whether or not Taylor Lane is a local road or collective, that is presently pending before the claim. Appears to me that Mr. Gazarovski's made his case before this board toward a determination as to whether or not Taylor Lane is a local or collective, you know, to end up with two different jurisdictional bodies with the same issue before them. I, I think that needs to be discussed and determined how we're going to proceed on this issue, because I don't want to have to prove my case twice, and quite frankly, I don't think Gazarovski should have to prove his case twice, and I don't know that we need to take up two more discounts on, pardon me.
Give me a second, please.
We're gonna have to discuss this as well. We're gonna have to discuss this, I mean, let, let, let's, let Mr. Schamowitz, if you finish raising your point.
That, that's really the issue, I mean, it's, I think before we get too deep.
Yeah, now, I hear. Well, I think that, I think that one of the issues I first raised, more grounded by just really interpretation, was that this matter should be stayed pending that hearing before the zoning board adjustment. And I think Mr. Gorman, and you applied that it should not do, but we should proceed forward. Having said that, I know that you were hearing scheduled before the board adjustment that will drive in time to this hearing this evening, I know that I am at least one occasion requested that it be determined, and I think Mr. Schamowitz did as well.
You on two occasions.
I said that.
You consent on one occasion.
I said that, I'm at least one occasion.
Yes, I said.
At least one occasion.
All right, so, as I understand it, is it appeal or is it interpretation, or both? It is not, pending before the zoning board filed, I'm gonna assume at this point back in the summertime, that it was known to be heard by the board, and it's been adjourned one time by Mr. Schamowitz and replaced by Mr. Gazarovski.
Yes.
And that's pending there, still pending. It just, it was up, and Mr. Schamowitz is asking, is it, are the proofs that you're trying to deduce from the testimony of Mr. Littlemore, you go to that issue?
Yes.
Why isn't Mr. Schamowitz correct in saying if they're gonna go to the zoning board, and ultimately they hold the trump card on interpretations, why is that not to be determined there?
Well, the real question is, why should that not be determined first? I don't see that as really possible.
Okay, but then, but here's my point, the reason why my advice to the board was not to wait until that happened, because I think it improved out, it's now been four months or so, and nothing happened. So, to put this on hold, waiting for something else to happen, I didn't see any requirement.
I, I understand, for the reasons that you're saying, I understand, the reason I was.
And so, so it's not this board's fault that that hasn't occurred as the zoning board, and if the zoning board had acted, because between various reasons, everyone has their reasons for adjournments and things happen, but if the zoning board had acted, this issue presumably would have been decided by what I believe to be the appropriate board on interpretation. So, why, I mean, I'm just, why isn't Mr. Schamowitz's argument valid?
And having this board vote on this case, on the bill then, that zoning board's adjustment decision comes that, I mean, I mean, it seems to me that in this case, as we've gone through cross-examination and the like, we're talking about the setbacks required at Taylor Lane, that, that is one of the most key issues in this case.
So, the law says zoning boards make interpretations, but clearly, planning boards throughout the course of routine hearings also interpret ordinances.
Absolutely.
Even though there's no statute or jurisdiction board, otherwise, every time something came up, we'd have to go to the zoning board.
Does that make more requests?
No, let me finish, I can make my request. This particular instance, I don't recall honestly if we advised that you go to the zoning board, or that, that was due to your client's independent determination to go to the zoning board. My recollection was, you decided to go there.
I did not advise.
Right, so if, if that didn't happen, perhaps, you know, because the issue would come up, how would we get past it, it would almost be required that this board make that determination, whether expressly, by Littlemore, the N L U L, or just because, well, some of you don't do it, but you made the choice to go against the zoning board, and there is proper statutory authority to do it, they accept your application, and who's scheduled, I assume, three times, not heard, so why shouldn't, so you, I mean, you wanted, you wanted to go there, you're there, it just hasn't happened yet, so why, go back, if, that being the facts, why isn't Mr. Schamowitz's argument valid?
But he, he makes, he makes a valid argument, I think, in the context of this case, that whoever was at fault, the zoning board hearing should have taken place prior to this case going forward. Having said that, you have applied, Mr. Gorman, that I agree with you, that on many occasions, planning boards make decisions concerning issues of jurisdictions or interpretations and the like, so, in order to make this matter a bit more streamlined and less complex, I will make a notice intention to the court that I am withdrawing my appeal to the zoning board adjustment, and I leave it within the purview of the powers of this board to make a decision with regard to this issue of whether these roadways are collective roads, local streets, or arterial, not the sole problem.
That's acceptable. I mean, we started in this board, and the board would decide this case, and we did ask to go to the zoning board, so I appreciate Mr. Gazarovski's representation, I, I think it has a.
Just, I am not waving the argument, I'm saying that this board will now be the body that makes a decision concerning whether this is local, collective, or arterial, which of course will be a part of any appeal, whether it be by me or by Mr. Schamowitz.
We understand where we are.
Any questions with the board, Mike? Can I ask, except for Mr. Schamowitz?
It is, and at the last hearing, I expressed my concern that, that the applicant had the right to put on his rebuttal case on this issue, this is an issue now raised by Mr. Gazarovski in cross-examination for the first time, and now through this direct case, so we, we will have a rebuttal case on, on this issue, it was actually a case we would parry for the zoning board, but I think as Mr. Gazarovski said, and I appreciate his decision tonight, this will streamline the matter, we'll, we'll let Mr. Gazarovski put forth his proof before this board, and we will also put forth our proofs and planning board will decide.
And what you're saying is, your rebuttal will be after the issue of the streetways, and that'll be the rebuttal testimony of your traffic consultant, no one else?
I did not say that at all, I didn't say that.
Well, who, who else would you call as rebuttal?
He doesn't know yet, because you have your case, so is your case on, and I'll figure out what happens, that's what lawyers do.
But he's bad, he's not allowed to pull any which?
Three good. Three good, because he doesn't know what your case is on an issue that he didn't bring, so it wants, if, if this issue requires or dictates that they have other witnesses, they have other witnesses, because you, the scope of the hearing has its meaning, so I think it's only fair that we're gonna wind up, if the issue is, is it collective or not, in this board, everybody agrees, and we're able to decide that issue, you put on your proofs, that that triggers a response from Mr. Schamowitz beyond the witnesses that he already had, or bringing back some of those witnesses again, he has to have that right, or, or otherwise, it doesn't seem fair, I mean, it's, it's an issue that wasn't on the table before. Can we worry about it when it happens? I mean, because we don't know, I mean, in all likelihood, it's probably gonna be, probably gonna be bringing back, you know, before the traffic, you figure that out, I mean, any of others, I don't know, I'm not gonna try, and you don't know what we're gonna say.
Not yet.
Mr. Wilson's asking, is that the sole basis for your appeal to the zoning board, that is whether it's the classification of Taylor Lane? That's what I understand, so, that's what's on, I, I think we're all in agreement, I have, you go on presenting that argument, when you're done with your affirmative witnesses, we're gonna give Mr. Schamowitz, or the applicant, the opportunity to rebut on that issue, and also, don't forget, you put on the blow for your witnesses as well, on, on things they said.
Exactly.
Hey, Mr. Littlemore, it was my train of thought, I believe when we left off, we were talking about other sources that you consulted with in, in coming up with your determination as to the classification of what is going to be Taylor Lane?
Yeah.
Yes, but this, did you also review the traffic report that was prepared by the applicant's traffic consultant, Mr. Trautman?
Yeah.
Did you give consideration to the various traffic counts, which he represented to this board would be present on Taylor Lane?
Oh, I reviewed the traffic counts that he used, as well as using the I T traffic counts that he did for the peak hour, the way he did it for the peak hour.
My first question, did you review it?
Yes, I did.
And we'll get to that as we go forward. Now, what sources specifically did you refer to in coming up with an opinion as to the nature of Taylor Lane?
Basically, the Highway Access Management Code, the ASHTO Booklets, the Residential Site Improvement Standards.
What, what is ASHTO standard?
American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials.
And who, who is the author or publisher of that document?
The publishers, the publishers are really the combination of the transportation, the publish, the, the ASHTO books are published by federal government, and they're made up of the, the transportation administrators from each one of the states, as well as the District of Columbia, and, and basically, what they do is they come up with standards that are to be followed in the design highways.
Okay, and I believe when Mr. Schamowitz made his objection, you were about to read a quote from ASHTO, was it that?
Correct.
Now, from what page were you reading?
I was reading from the 2004 edition of the Policy on Geometric Design of Highways and Streets, 2004, page 12.
Now, once again, we slowly and loudly support you here, and according to board to take it there.
Right. The collector's street system provides both land access service and traffic circulation within residential neighborhoods and commercial and industrial areas. It differs from the arterial system, in that facilities on the collector's system may penetrate residential neighborhoods, distributing trips from the arterials through the area to their ultimate destinations. Conversely, the collector's street also collects traffic from local streets in residential neighborhoods and channels into the arterial system. In the central business district and in other areas of similar development and traffic density, the collector's system may include the entire grid. The collector's street system may also carry local bus routes.
Now, looking at the plan, which is before the board.
Yeah.
Now, there, there is in fact an arterial roadway which runs the entire, basically, frontage of this track on Route 35. Mr. Gazarovski, does the board want? Hello? Now, give the board your eyes or soul to the site, correct?
Yeah.
Now, Route 35 in fact runs from west to east along the entire frontage of this site, was it not?
Yeah.
And the opposite side of Route 35 is Cherry Tree Farm Road.
Correct.
Now, in the master plan designation of streets in the township of, of Mittletown, Route 35 is in fact identified as an arterial, a primary arterial road, correct?
It's defined as a principal arterial road by the New Jersey Department of Transportation, the federal government, as well as the town government and master plan.
Now, on the northern side of, of Route 35, is Cherry Tree Farm Road, and that is listed in the master plan of the township of Mittletown as a secondary arterial road, is it not?
I believe so.
Okay, now, let's take a look at the proposed route, rather, the proposed realized Route 35. We were pressing for Mr. Coco to describe the width of this roadway immediately prior to entering into Route 35, that we could testify is 90 feet of width.
Yes.
And, and that proceeds to the balance of the travel lane, where I believe the road width is, is 30 feet.
Correct, and now it's a 30, but a 50 foot right away.
A 30, 30 feet, now, tell me if you can, what the function of Taylor Lane is with regard to these arterial roadways and the project being built as the subject matter of this application?
Well, the way Taylor Lane relocated and rebuilt and reconstructed under the alignment would operate would be if we take trips from an arterial and move them off that arterial road and connect them with local streets, the local streets being those that serve the new proposed development.
And then with that ingress and egress onto 35 is what is Cherry Tree?
Correct.
Now, how many individual units are being constructed, if you know approximately, industry project?
I'll take a look exactly, how many? 196 townhouses and 49 apartments.
Now, just for, can we identify that for a second? That was an exhibit that you used last time?
I think we utilized it in cross-examination, Mr. Coco, I don't believe, uh, Traut, I don't believe there was more, so can we?
What was I next, go to? I'm trying to, I'm gonna look at my notes. 05 was an area on my notes with Taylor Lane marked with pink paint, that's that.
That's just what it is.
That's O5.
O5.
Okay, Mr. Lordia, if you would, just stop to this for a second and tell us whether or not you familiarize yourself with the roadways and the location of the subject site being identified here, well, in stick. Can you do that?
Yeah.
Now, looking through the south, can you describe to the board what these orange lines depict as far as there being residential subdivisions there?
They represent local streets for the most part, with residential properties most spread out, serviced by different streets.
Okay, now, how do those subdivisions, which are located immediately to the south of these stickies, how do they access ingress and egress to Route 35?
Some of them go through the existing Taylor Lane, through connections, and others circulate differently to different routes.
Now, when you refer to the existing Taylor Lane, if this project is approved, that existing Taylor Lane will cease to exist, will it not?
Correct.
And there will be a re-alignment of Taylor Lane, and I'm going to the east and west of that new Taylor Lane will have approximately two hundred and forty living rooms.
Correct.
Which I'm not sure about this, because they don't exist yet.
And they don't show on there because the realigned Taylor Lane doesn't exist here.
Okay, fine, now.
Can I, can I just make a comment? Mr. Schmalow is not jumping up, but I think you have to make an effort to make questions less meaty. Just less meaty, because the questions are all colon, or colon in general, were just yes or no answers, and they're particularly meaty.
Now, having looked at both of the exhibits, one which you referred to as being the applicant's exhibit and the other being O5, looking at those exhibits, how do they compare to the definition which you set forth in ASCO, and what was your opinion as to what they reflect?
Well, basically, reflects the ASCO definition pretty specifically, it's almost exactly. People that will show on an arterial street will go to a collector's street, and from the collector's street, they will go into the residential developments. And it would depend upon how many trips are going through those developments, which would further ascertain what the classification of the street would be. But usually, you go from an arterial to a collector to a local. You don't usually go from a collector to a local. You go from a, excuse me, let me rephrase that. You don't usually go from an arterial to a local, you go from an arterial to a collector to a local. So you follow that classification down.
Okay, now, with regard to that same question, are there other documents that you referred to?
Yes.
What would that be?
I looked at the NJDOT Highway Access Management Code, the definitions and what it defines as a collector road.
Now, when you say you referred to the Highway Access Management Code, is there a specific section which you referred to?
I looked at the definition section, section sixteen, colon, forty-seven, dash, one point one. And in that, there was a definition for a collector road. And the collector road means the classification category for roads that primarily serve intra-county trips characterized by moderate volume as being that provide for land access, traffic circulation, and access to arterial routes.
Now, when you referred to, or looked at those various subdivisions, there are also streetways which are anterior to the subdivisions, are there not?
There are streetways that are in this project on the cycling.
Well, now, you have the subdivisions as well.
The other subdivisions as well, you usually have local streets that are interconnecting, cul-de-sac, et cetera, that.
That are interconnecting what?
Cul-de-sac.
Cul-de-sac, and small grid patterns within a residential development. And that usually, those streets will then enter into a collector's street, and from the collector's street, they will go to an arterial. The arterial streets are usually geared towards intra-county activity, as opposed to the collectors, which are usually intra-county and intermunicipality.
Okay, now, what else did you, now, during the cross-examination of Mr. Trapp, you was referenced to the RSIS standards, was it not?
Yeah.
Did you also consider that?
Yes, I did.
Tell us specifically, what section of the RSIS would you refer to?
I looked at the definition section, which is under definitions and abbreviations and sections, five, colon, twenty-one, dash, one point four definitions.
Once again, read that into the record, and once again, read slowly and loudly.
The definition section reads, "Reminder collector. A middle-order of residential street provides running for access to lots and carries traffic of adjoining residential access streets, designed to carry somewhat higher traffic lines to lower-order streets such as rural and residential access streets, with traffic limited to motorists having origin or destination within the immediate neighborhood. It is not intended to carry regional traffic."
Tell us if you can, I believe this is in course with what Taylor Lane does, and how does it do it?
Well, it's in course with what Taylor Lane does, because basically, you come into this proposed residential development by coming off an arterial road into a collector's street, and you access the local streets.
Now, does Taylor Lane service any subdivisions or projects other than the proposed site?
Yes, further to this town.
Okay, now, great weight was placed by the applicant's traffic consultant, Master Plan, and Master Plan comments concerning roadways, did you give consideration to that?
Yes.
What is your determination, read that?
Well, I looked at the master plan, and in section on page twenty-three, it says, if I can quote it, "Some local streets serve as local collectors. While not included in the federal functional classification system, local collectors often serve a dual function of property access and traffic collection. Local collectors often serve as through streets in major subdivisions and planned developments, and should have enhanced right-of-way widths that reflect this role. It is recommended that the additional right-of-way be utilized to promote a boulevard design along these local collectors."
How does that conform with the proposed plan?
Well, basically, some of the local streets act as collectors, and that's what this does, it acts as a collector. In addition to that, the, when I say this does, I mean the proposed reconstructed Taylor Lane does. Existing road, I don't believe does, but the new Taylor Lane does, because it has access to, one, it has access to an arterial more directly and in a better way, serving seeing the community better. Number two, it increases the amount of traffic on Taylor Lane tremendously by having this large development on both sides of Taylor Lane access by local streets.
Now, in the old Taylor Lane, did old Taylor Lane have direct access to Cherry Tree Farm Road, which is located on the northerly side of Route 35?
Not the rest of it.
Similar thing in regard to the traffic proceeding in a westwardly direction on Route 35, was there immediate access to the existing Taylor Lane?
For people going on the northerly direction on the state highway, they would not have direct access to Taylor Lane. They would have to make a U-turn and then come back and exit Taylor Lane off the jug handle.
Would it be, would it be fair to say then, that with regard to the proposed new Taylor Lane, do you feel that the manner of design would have any impact at all upon the amount of road use on new Taylor Lane as compared to old Taylor Lane?
Well, studies have shown that when you provide a new roadway with new access and new destinations and easier access, usually you get an increase in induced traffic, which is approximately ten to twenty percent. And the reason you get the induced traffic is, one, it serves more people, it's more direct, and it saves time for people that would have not gone that way previously.
And in this particular case, in addition to all of that, there are an additional approximately two hundred and fifty units utilizing this roadway.
Yes, there are two hundred, approximately two hundred and fifty units, and the traffic study that was provided to the board did not provide the twenty-four-hour traffic volumes, although the Institute of Transportation Engineer does provide the twenty-four-hour volumes as part of their normal analyses. And that, for those units, that in this particular case, the traffic volume would be approximately fifteen hundred and seventy-five daily trips on an average weekday that would come from this, from this development.
Is there any significance at all to the figure fifteen hundred and seventy-five trips?
There's two parts to that. One, the fifteen hundred and seventy-five trips in an average day does not include any of the existing traffic on Taylor Lane. And in addition to that, if you take a look to Residential Site Improvement Standards, their specific is, when you get to be over fifteen hundred trips a day, it classifies the roadway as a collector as opposed to a local street. And I think it's important to note, in the definition section of the Residential Site Improvement Standards, in our page, in section five, colon, twenty-one, dash, one point four, it does say basically, if I can quote, "The following words, terms, and abbreviations when used in this chapter shall have the following meanings, unless the context clearly indicates otherwise. Where a word or term is defined in this chapter and a municipal land use law, then the definition of that word or term found in the MLUL shall govern. Words and terms in the MLUL and defined here for convenience have been designated by the use of the MAU following their meaning." And that was the collector's street that I gave for in that definition. So basically, it's my opinion that this definition section of the RSIS holds that those definitions should be used by all municipalities.
Now, is it your opinion that there is a clear dichotomy between what is referred to in the master plan and the RSIS?
No, I don't feel there's a big dichotomy, because in the master plan, there is no reconstructed roadway as we have before the board today. The master plan shows a local roadway with inadequate circulation through a jug handle, which is not anywhere near what would be an arterial roadway. And when you take that new roadway, which is what's before the board today, it's not the existing Taylor Lane that is shown in the master plan. A new roadway with an addition of additional traffic, et cetera. As a matter of fact, the Federal Aid Urban System has, what was on, had modified, arguably modified the definitions of roadways to put them in different classifications. And specifically, what it does is to look at the roadway, see if there's any new developments, see what the new ADT would be to be projected on that roadway, and then determine if the classification should be modified, for example, from local to collector. And that's what, that's what called for in the federal aid system handbook, which is used by the state and federal government plans. Federal aid systems are set up and the jurisdictions and the classification of roadways are identified.
Now, what was was made to you to the state, what does that say in the word?
The average annual, the average daily traffic is ADT.
Average what?
The average daily traffic, I'm sorry. And the average daily traffic just from the residential development alone is fifteen hundred and seventy-five vehicles a day onto the new reconstructed, realigned roadway.
Now, did you estimate what the future volume would be on Taylor Lane based upon the studies done by the applicant's traffic engineer?
I believe there would be approximately two thousand and two hundred vehicles per day as a minimum.
All right, tell us I didn't write that.
That would be from utilization of the existing counts and a, not counting any estimate for ten to twenty percent induced traffic, so it could be a little bit higher than that. But I would estimate around twenty-two to twenty-five hundred vehicles per day was what will be on that reconstructed, realigned.
Now, is there, is there an estimated number of trips that you're personally utilizing?
Excuse me, I just want to make sure, that's your estimate of what will be on?
On the reconstructed Taylor Lane.
On the reconstructed Taylor Lane.
Correct.
Just before you move forward, can I just ask, Mr. Ganzowski and Mr. Lordia, have you all been down, been driven down the current town lane and through the neighborhood that's attached to that?
Yeah.
You both have.
Yeah, well, basically, if you recall, there's not a big difference in traffic lines because of the fact that, one, there's going to be over fifteen hundred, almost sixteen hundred vehicles a day just going onto, onto Taylor Lane because of this new development. So we're talking about having about eighty, eight hundred trips plus some induced traffic, and you're up to twenty-two, twenty-four hundred.
So are we saying, excuse me, are we saying now that it's about seven hundred and twenty-five, we have?
There's around, there's probably around eight hundred trips a day on Taylor Lane now.
On the existing Taylor Lane.
Correct. And that's not very high, and that, for the existing Taylor Lane, is eight hundred trips a day, fits the, what's in the, in the master plan. But the master plan doesn't have a reconstructed, realigned road.
Right.
I mean, with the new data on it, with the new development. And you add that in, it changes, one, it changes the location of the road, it changes the volumes on the road, it changes the definition of what's there.
I'm just curious myself, if you all have driven down currently the way it is and through that neighborhood as a so-called cut-through area, what, what you're perhaps thought, if that figured into any of it.
It's not going to be especially a cut-through area, but what's going to happen is.
I beg to hear the question, if this whiteboard suggested that have proceeded, it's a cut-through area.
No, I did not suggest that at all. I definitely did not suggest that at all.
Mark, you were answered your question?
Well, basically, what I'm saying is that there's going to be a substantial amount of traffic in there. The majority of the traffic is not going to be cut-through traffic, but you're going to have just over fifteen hundred trips a day just from the residential.
The residential, right.
Which is substantial.
Now, let me ask you this question, Mr. Lordia. I think when you testified, you commented that the existing Taylor Lane, there are existing ADTs of approximately eighty-five cars, right?
Correct.
Now, how would that roadway then be classified based upon that volume of cars?
I think what I said previously, that this way, it seems to be exactly what's in the master plan at the present time, is a local street, because with that volume, it's lower than fifteen hundred vehicles per day. It only serves the local streets, because you don't have good direct access to an arterial. You only have access to a one-way section of roadway, and you do not also have the development of fifteen hundred or sixteen hundred vehicles per day because of the new residential developments.
Let me question you regarding to RSIS. Does the IRS set for specific trip totals with regard to the classification of these roads?
It, it does, and the reason it uses those is because it also changes the design of the roadways as well, because the higher traffic lines need higher, higher, thicker pavement, et cetera. And that goes along with the classification of the roadway, as well as the design classifications that are pulled out by ASCO.
Now, when you say design classification of roadways, what does that refer to?
Well, what I was referring to is when the design, when the volume's increased and the design standards are modified somewhat, so that you have a higher, you have wider road, you have, you have, you have more shoulders, you have thicker pavement, you have a combination of various things that you have to do when the volume's increased.
Now, with regard to the review of the project, did you in fact review this project referring to the RSIS standards?
Yeah.
And what was your analysis?
Well, I looked at it and there was a couple of different things. There were two different ways of looking at it. One way was on the RSIS site plan concerns and comments. And how do you look at it as a residential site proofing standard? You look at it two different ways as far as the site plan goes. One is the site plan width, roadway width, et cetera. And to get to that, you have to know what type of development it is. First of all, what you have to do is define what type of development is going to be as far as the intensity of development. The intensity of development is either a low, medium, or high-intense development. And that from the RSIS is the dwelling units per gross acre. So the standards are modified whether it's a low, intense development, medium-intense development, or high-intense development. Low is less than or equal to four units per gross acre.
I'll have to shift.
Low is what?
The medium development is more than four and less than or equal to eight dwelling units per gross acre. And high would be more than eight. In this development, the unit per 20.8 gross acres comes out of approximately 11.6 dwelling units per acre, which is the highest of the street densities in the county. So basically, what we're saying, and what not we're saying, but the RSIS is saying, is that this should be reviewed as the highest intensity development that there is in residential site proofing standards. And as such, those roadways have to meet the qualifications and it has to meet the street definitions, sidewalk requirements, et cetera, and curbing. And it all the higher volume requirements that are put in the residential site proofing standards. Now, if we take a look at that and we look at some of the parts from the residential site proofing standards, we can see from the different tables in the RSIS that the sidewalk is required on both sides of the streets. The right way of 50 feet is required. And the carway measured from curb to curb should be 28 feet. Those are the basic high-density requirements that should be put in. We usually recommend a 30-foot wide carway which allows safe parking on both sides. There is a high-density streets with non-parallel parking require a trafficway that is 24-foot wide. Non-parallel parking would be like a parking lot where people pull in from both sides. It's like an access area. So you have a 24-foot wide strip and then you can park perpendicular to that as access area. And that meets the residential site proofing standards for that like where it's like a ordinary shopping center or some of the other aisles which are 24-foot aisle and had nine by 18 spaces.
And the what?
And nine by 18 parking spaces like in a ordinary shopping center and some other high-density developments. However, there's another part of it and where you do have parallel parking, where there is parallel parking, then you would have to have you would have to have basically 28-foot wide road with parking on one side. And in all instances, the RSIS because of the high-density development and the number of pedestrians that travel require, basically, they require sidewalks on both sides of the street inside the development in all areas.
Yeah, you referred to this issue of high density and required road with 28 feet. This proposed roadway is 30 feet to the carway, is it not?
The roadway is 30 feet to the carway and right along the intersection as the collector's street, which is the main portion which bisects the road and which is now the relocated newly constructed Taylor Lane.
Do you agree with the engineer in designing the roadway that has a 30-foot carway?
It would be a 30-foot carway, which would be acceptable, but it would be no parking on either side in that section of roadway which should provide, according to the RSIS, sidewalks on both sides of the road.
Now, would a 30-foot wide carway be typical of a local road or a collector's road?
It would be more of a collector's road than a local road. You can have a local road as well in the development, but there are no roads planned for 30 feet in this development.
Now-
Inside the development. The only road that's 30 feet would be Taylor Lane reconstructed and revised alignment.
Just make that analysis of carways on the surrounding subdivisions located within the subdivision itself.
Those roadways would be now, yeah. The roadways inside the development would be now-
Well, when you say now, or less than 30 feet?
They would be from 24 to 26.
Why would that be?
You can have 24 feet when you're in the parking lot area, but you would need a higher, larger width when you're outside of those parallel. When you're outside of perpendicular parking lot areas, then you would have to have the 28-foot carway which is required by RSIS.
Do you agree with the reasoning of the site engineer in describing to construct this roadway with a 30-foot width predicated upon the traffic that's concerned?
Predicated on the traffic, it would be, I think it would be acceptable to have the 30-foot width with no parking on the reconstructed, realigned Taylor Lane.
Now, did you also have occasion to review the site plan itself?
Yes.
What comments do you have to make after having reviewed the site plan?
Well, basically, what I was saying is you're going to have some of the sections the pavement which do not meet the RSIS standards. There are 24 to 26 feet. They should be 28 feet in those areas. 24 feet was with a perpendicular parking occurred. And those places where it's not and there's on-street parking, it should be wider. The other thing is there's a lot of parking that's shown within 25 to 50 feet of an intersection. You're not supposed to have any parking within 25 foot of an intersection. And at an intersection, you're not supposed to have any parking within 50 feet of the stop sign at the intersection. And there's some parking, the applicant probably lose about 20 on-street parking spaces.
He's 20 on-street.
The applicant will probably lose approximately 20 parking spaces if he followed Title 23 for the regulations for parking. Number three comment I had on that would be that the sidewalks are missing along both sides of developments, internal roadways in several locations, as well as along Taylor Lane relocated and also along Route 35 and 35 Ram. So there's a significant number of sidewalks that are missing. And the reason they're there is because of the fact that it's a high-density development and requires it because of the number of pedestrian trips that would be expected, especially with the recreation area on one side of Taylor Lane relocated and reconstructed in the development on the other side. So you have that. There is also a serious number of unsafe dead-end aisles that indicate an over-utilization of some of the site because of the lack of a circuitous or connecting roadway system between some of these areas. So you have large dead-end aisles in certain areas.
Okay. And step to the exhibit and just show the board, if you would, where do you claim sidewalks are necessary but not provided and where dead-end streets are located you say should not be looking?
I didn't catch it earlier on. I was distracted. What exhibit are we looking at now?
I don't have that. If we take a look at it, there's no sidewalk along Main Road or along the highway. In addition, there are dead-end aisles which are along the periphery of some of the lots which are not really excellent for design because you have an emergency, if you need fire access, fire engines can't get in and can't get out easily. Usually, like some of the areas, you have good circulation around, but then other areas you have dead-end spaces and you have no way to get out. Some of them can be remedied with emergency access roadways. Others are just completely dead-end and they don't have them. So you would have to provide emergency access points in different areas so that you would have good circulation for fire trucks and emergency vehicles, which is not provided at present time.
As you go through these, could you clarify as to whether or not that's your opinion or whether it is an RSIS standard? Because I just want to make sure that my notes were correct. So will you go back one second? The sidewalks on Taylor Lane-
Sidewalks on Taylor Lane and-
Let me finish. Taylor Lane and 35 under RSIS. You don't have to give us a particular paragraph right now. That's required for RSIS sidewalks on both sides?
Sidewalks on both sides of all the residential roadways are required by RSIS because of the size of this development and the density of the development. If it's a high-density development, it requires that. And that's on everything.
Very much.
That would be for everything. Just good engineering-
Wait, wait.
That would be for-
My bad. We're just trying to speed up to time and respond to the question.
We're also making noise up here, so. The sidewalks on both sides, Taylor Lane and Route 35, we understand that. The internal roads or driveways within this project, are sidewalks required in there?
They're required internally as well on both sides of the road because of the intensity of the development.
Okay. Is that required on this plane here? Could you show where? Are they missing? Is that, what are they providing?
Well, we can start right here. You have no sidewalks on this side, on the south side of this road, which I don't know what building that serves. But the southernmost building on the west, on the north side of the southernmost building on the west side of relocated and realigned Taylor Lane has no sidewalk coming in. Numerous roadways, numerous, let's see, there's sidewalk on the north side of this driveway. There's no sidewalk internally. There's a lack of sidewalk on numerous other residential properties. And I don't have exactly all of them, but some of them are, I can't see them from here.
Can you?
But I know those are, they're not there on all the roadways inside.
And we're using a red laser pointer, which on a transcript is not going to be there. So there are locations within the internal driveway or roadway network that would require sidewalks on both sides.
That's- Most of the streets internally are required on both sides. They're not provided on both sides.
Right. And that's an RSIS requirement.
Correct.
Now, when I interrupted, and I apologize, you were talking about the dead-end parking areas. You had pointed some of them out.
I pointed the dead-end parking areas out. And these dead-end parking areas are not required by RSIS.
That's what I was asking. As you go through these, could you, as part of your testimony, say whether it's based upon RSIS or based upon other standards? So that when we get all done, we have a basis. I'm sure Mr. Schramm would put these questions later, but just so it's clear tonight. It became unclear to me at least in my notes. What standards are being violated? So the dead ends at the end of the parking areas are based upon sound traffic engineering practices?
Sound traffic engineering as well as the fire department.
But not RSIS?
Not RSIS. And numerous of the dead-end aisles can be remedied by providing emergency access to different roadways.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but when you go through these deficiencies, just try to spell out the standard that they don't need.
The dead-end aisles are not required to be remedied by RSIS, but good engineering would call for the dead-end aisles to have an emergency access connection to a nearby ramp or roadway, which would allow fire emergency access to those facilities since they're high-density. And that would usually be recommended even though it's not required by RSIS.
May I ask, do you agree that the dead-end roads as they stand now is simply for a simple K-turn? At the end, when you're coming out of the parking, is it, yes, enough for a K-turn?
The dead-end aisles are large enough for a simple K-turn except when you have emergency access. And then that's why we recommend that you provide you provide the emergency connection for other vehicles like fire engines and basically fire engine more than anything else. So while they're not required by RSIS, we usually recommend them when we review projects so that we can, you know, so we can have fire access in all directions. And once you get fire engines in and they can't back up because of hoses or whatever else and they can't respond to another emergency, they get trapped in there and ambulances can't get in. So you have two ways of in and out of these places. It's a lot safer.
I understand. Thank you.
And your opinions about the width, Taylor Lane, based on RSIS standards as well?
Excuse me?
I said, your opinions about the width, the proper width?
The proper width are RSIS standards. And those are required by RSIS, as pointed out by your board engineer as well. So those standards, the wider roadways are required. But inside the dead-end aisle areas, which are in this area, 24-foot width is acceptable, but you should be providing sidewalks in there. So yes, there's, you are sidewalks required by RSIS. Roadway widths are 24 to 26 to 30 feet depending on what road. I think those are the major problems I had with the internal site design. There were other deficiencies in the site with the design having to do with some of the DOP standards.
About with regard to the estimation of trip generation that's put forward on the traffic.
Well, the numbers that Mr. Schramm used in the ITE, from the ITE Trip Generation Tech, and I would say that disparate information, since people weren't asked about like, not having passed any tests, the Trip Generation Manual, the first one was done and presented and worked on by people that work for me and my staff as I was the director of planning and trustee regional planning commission. And the persons working on it and I, the main forecasting area, used the data and created the first book of the Trip Generation. So I did have some experience in this stuff, even though I didn't pass the test. Developed the book.
What test?
The text is Trip Generation. And that text does provide the 24-hour volume.
Text, T E S T is trip generation?
The text is called Trip Generation by ITE. And in that book, the text allows and predicts the 24-hour PDP average daily traffic as well as peak hour traffic. The peak hour traffic volumes Mr. Schramm used were from the ITE text. He did not list the 24-hour volumes, which were 1,575 vehicles per day.
In your prior statement, you said although you referred to a test, T E S T, I thought. Were you referring to a test?
I referred to the text ITE, the Reivering Text.
Okay. There was no, you weren't referring to tests, T E S T. No exams?
No, I didn't take any exams.
I thought you had said although you didn't pass the test.
No, I didn't take the test. I didn't pass.
T E S T, test. Didn't take the test. What about that part?
I didn't pass or take a test to be credited as a traffic engineer, which is what- I wasn't credited.
Didn't have it then.
I was just, excuse me, actually, I said that.
Now, what problems, if any, would you discern in reading? Let me ask you first whether or not you had occasion to read the book which verified Mr. Schramm's title, Heritage of Middletown, Dead End, and Longloss, which is a- the dead-end of the block of Los, which is a traffic analysis fair or reviewed by the professional in the area of Middletown. Did you review that stuff?
Yes.
Now, what problems, if any, that you had with the information put forward by Mr. Schramm?
Two of the minor things in the traffic analysis. But I would point out one of the things. The analysis was based on 196 townhouses and 49 apartments that would be rental units. So all the units were not townhouses. Some of them are rental. And if any of the townhouses are becoming rental units as well, that would expand and increase the amount of traffic that would be produced because rental units create more traffic than townhouses. So there should be some testimony as to the applicant not allowing any of these townhouses to be utilized as rental units. Second, they shouldn't have, there should be a restriction for using these as rental units because it's going to increase the traffic additionally. In addition to that, usually, there's no real, there's no real ability for people to store boats or SUVs or larger vehicles on the site. So there should be some restriction on that type of vehicle. In addition to that, there should be, usually, require restrictions in converting any of the garage units to be converted into dwelling units or bedrooms or converting them. They have to maintain this as regular garages, or else you also increase the traffic. And you don't have enough parking if you start to do that. You will not meet the residential site improvement standards for parking because the garages have to be maintained as garages. And we've had problems with developments like this where people would actually have violent confrontations because of the lack of parking when they put in boats or SUVs or other vehicles. And then there was enough parking for their own cars and other units' cars. So that's some of the conditions I think that's worth considering in their review.
Now, the script determination as to when Mr. Schramm would adopt the form of his traffic studies?
Yes, I did. He made the studies recount in February and March.
That was a few years ago?
Well, one of it was a couple of years ago, but two was in the winter months. And I consider that this area is more shore, seashore oriented in the summer months. And winter months, I consider having, I consider myself having lower volumes. And we did, or I did, a traffic study on Sandy Hook to make it into an national park. And we had to do the traffic study from the parkway to Sandy Hook. When we looked at that and sent that report to Congress to get the approval, basically what we did is we looked at that and found that there was a substantial increase in traffic in the summer months. And indeed, the NJDOT has shown that if you take any accounts in those months that were taken by the applicant, those numbers are usually 25 to 30% lower than they are in the summer. And they're lower compared to an average daily traffic. So basically, I feel that the volumes might be a little on the low side. In addition, as even was pointed out by some of the board members, there's more traffic in the summer and more people are going to target some of the other areas in the summer months. And we agree with those comments from the boards.
As your consultation to review the manner which Route 35 is utilized for west and east of subject property?
Yes.
Are there various commercial enterprises, shopping centers, and large blue stores?
Correct.
Now, does that have any impact on the amount of traffic that'll be utilized by Taylor Lane?
Well, you're going to have more traffic in the summer months than you would in the winter months, especially in February and March. So you're going to have additional traffic generated on many roadways, so the impact would be greater.
Now, what about with regards to trip distribution? Do you have any comments on that?
Well, usually, when you do a trip distribution, you use a gravity model. With the gravity model, distribute the trip according to the distance as well as the uses. In other words, if you have a lot of trips going to a train station, that would be a major generator and detractor. And in this instance, with no gravity model distribution of the trips, so the question is how and where do the trips go? It's just not really scientifically distributed, not in my opinion. I would think it's a weak point in the study.
Mr. Schramm, I want to read to you on page 18 of Mr. Schramm's report's conclusion. He says, "Based on the analysis contained in the volume of this report, it is concluded that proposed heritage in Middletown, residential community, can be constructed and occupied without having adverse detrimental impact on traffic conditions in the area. Access to the community gained via the realignment of Taylor Lane to the opposite chairman tree of the road. The intersection realignment will improve levels of service by reducing critical delays on future build traffic conditions." Now, does not that conclusion suggest that there will in fact be more traffic on the proposed Taylor Lane as compared to the old Taylor Lane?
Well, here's a couple of things to answer that. I would make a couple of comments. One, there's going to be substantially more traffic on the reconstructed and realigned Taylor Lane. And I'd like to keep calling it the reconstructed, realigned Taylor Lane because it doesn't bear any resemblance to anything in the existing master plan as a reconstructed, realigned roadway. Secondly, the traffic that's going to be generated and put onto that is going to be over 2,300 vehicles per day, which is substantially greater than is there now. Probably over three or four times, about three times as much traffic as presently exists on the road. And three, the traffic analysis that is used is based on traffic volumes that are a couple of years old, taken in February and March, and not adjusted for seasonal variations. In addition to that, a lot of the analysis use peak hour factors that are not accurate and do not reflect the actual counts that were shown. And if you use the wrong peak hour factor, this peak hour factor is one. If you get one car every second, it will fail. Now, if the peak hour factor is five, you might get one, two, three, four, five cars, and then no cars, and then five cars, and then no cars. So if the peak hour, the higher you use the peak hour factor, the more even the distribution is, the more constant. So if you use the peak hour factor of one, that would mean you're going to get an even distribution to the hour. If you use peak hour of five, you're going to get spikes, and you're not going to get as clean a flow. So basically, what the applicant signed in this analysis is you speak hour factors that were higher towards the one side than towards the actual numbers that were counted through the traffic counts. And that means that it's going to show bias towards free flow, and it's not going to be as accurate as if you use the real peak hour factors that were actually counted on.
Using the numbers that are put forward under Mr. Schramm, don't add to the existing traffic at the site along with the proposed traffic, which is generally the result of the asphalt condition, and we won't depend on using these numbers whether or not new Taylor Lane would be classified as either the local or the collector road?
There's no doubt it would have to be collector road. There's no doubt in my mind. It all fits everybody's definition. And the RSIS definitions even say that those definitions in the RSIS would be the ones that could be held and used despite the MLU.
Now, what conclusions, if any, have you come to solely in regard to the issue of designing a site as to traffic conditions? Putting aside the issue of whether it's a collector road or a local road?
Well, I think I testified that there are certain conditions that have to be matched, or variances or waivers have to be asked for and provided. Some of those have to do with the street. And in addition to that, it has to do with the sidewalks on both sides of the street and internally as well as the collector's street.
Now, normally, not traffic for a second. We also, I wish you'd also as an expert in the field of civil engineering, have the occasion to re-present at the last hearing regarding question, Mr. Coco, regarding the test case that happened before.
Yes.
But you also have occasion to review the French and rural report which dealt with the taking of these tests.
Yes.
And we call out line of questioning having to do with the presence of modeling in various pits.
Correct.
In your opinion, what is the significance of that?
Well, modeling shows where you're going to have a groundwater table. And modeling is what usually happens when the water is in that area. They just colors and modifies the actual soil, the soil content in that describing.
In that what?
In that describing.
Now, in this particular case, is there a difference between what the applicant represents, the water table is, as compared to what the modeling shows?
Modeling shows that the water tables were around four foot, four and a half foot, three and a half foot below this distant surface, which is considerably higher than was indicated in some of the texts.
Now, what impact, if any, would that have upon the resilience of the project?
Well, one of the things would be that you would not want to have any basements in any of the buildings, which would have to be... The applicant testified that they weren't going to have any, but I would say that if it was going to be built, it should be part of any resolutions or approval if there wouldn't be any. And two, it would be required to modify the actual depth inside of the detention basins.
Else, why that would be?
Well, because the water's not going to be able to seep down into basins. Let me just go back one step. A lot of the data was taken in the winter months. And there was testimony at the previous meeting that in the winter months, that's the worst time to take readings because at that time, you have higher levels of water. And my experience has been that in the wintertime, you have frozen ground, and any rain that falls doesn't seep into the ground, but it settles on top and freezes. And then when you take a test pit or dig one out, you're breaking through the frozen ground on the top. And there is no water level like below it because it didn't penetrate during the winter months. So I can't agree with what Mr. Coco has said in his testimony. And with that in mind, I would feel that the modeling that was at the higher elevations is the modeling that should be utilized in the analysis.
Now, assuming for the sake of argument that, as you suggest, the water table is higher, what impact, if any, would that have upon the specific basin which we referred to in the northwest corner of the site?
Well, you might have to have a larger basin because of the height of the water table has to be retained usually at two feet from that basin. So you would probably have to have a larger basin that would be shallower as opposed to a smaller basin that would be deeper.
We usually would take a break around this time. And I'm not going to take a break. I want to continue. I think we're going to probably end the meeting around 9:30. If that's okay with everyone, I want to continue. I don't want to have any break at all.
Can we assume for the sake of argument, I have a problem with that.
Okay.
But can we assume for the sake of argument that Mr. Schramm is going to take perhaps a half an hour of course?
Oh, whatever.
Actually, I'd like to follow Mr. Zeraski's pattern of course examination.
Okay. Okay, very good. Let's see, what are you doing?
So you don't want a course examination, Mr. Water table is hot.
That's fine.
So you have a lower than the actual?
Okay.
And request on the different boards. I'll prepare the grant for the question.
Yes.
Well, let's assume then, for the sake of argument, that the course examination, not course examination, but direct examination, studies, ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty. So I suggest that we stop at that time for Mr. Schramm's discussion. We'll be continual at the next meeting.
I want to see what you have to do with that. Okay, very good.
At one point, procedural issue. This committee has testified the public has a right to ask some questions. I mean, so whether they will or not is up to them. But the public has a right, not replying, but replying. If the public has a right to ask some questions. If they would, they don't have. Anybody in the audience have questions to Mr. Gordon related to his testimony? Sir, I recognize your face, I don't recognize your name. You have previously sworn this matter?
Adam Lo, yes.
Is that your last name?
Lately is Victor O E H L. Mr. Gordon, you mentioned a comparison of local roads to collector roads. Setbacks are set such that this is designated as a local road. If this were deemed to be a collector road, would that have any impact on the building setbacks along the Taylor Lane?
The testimony last, at the last hearing, the applicant's engineer was that the setbacks are presently set at 25 feet, with 10 feet is required as they consider relocated and redesigned Taylor Lane as a local street. If it was a collector, it would have to be pushed back to a 50-foot setback as opposed to the 25-foot setback now, which would modify the building footprints and locations.
The building what?
The building footprints and locations.
So as Taylor Lane, if it were designated as a collector road, the setbacks would have to increase?
Correct.
And where is it stated that that has to be, those setbacks have to increase? Is that in RSIS?
No, that's in the deputy board.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. I'm Virginia, real lady. Does I recall, I'm sorry. Does I recall, yeah, the address you represented, your client, Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, so that's that gentleman. Your name?
Lucy Bonilla, B O N I L L A.
I don't think you're previously... People have a tendency to lapse into testimonies. Please raise your right hand. Swear testimony about your board, the whole period of the truth. Don't be got. Now, recognize that even though he swore you went, this is the time to ask questions.
I just have one question with regard to the required sidewalks if Taylor Lane is designated as collector road. Do sidewalks have to extend the whole length of Taylor Lane? Or just that portion in front of the proposed settlement?
Well, the original site improvement standards call for it to be included as a width along the site frontage. So it doesn't include going away from the site. So it's only required inside the site frontage and where the roads are.
Inside the, I'm sorry.
Inside the site frontage as well as inside the development and along the site frontage.
Okay, thank you.
Not required to go further than along the site.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
First of all, sir, we have four in the life, we're going to take it to Dan.
Officer Hernandez, 2006, Berthold.
Officer Hernandez?
Yes.
Have you previously done that? You were on the...
As far as the retention pond, I think you were talking about. When they did the calculations and you disagreed with doing it in the winter versus the summertime?
Yes.
I live in the surrounding area along with Bennett's. And when it rains, it's a heavy rain, and we already have saturation on the projects. If these retention ponds that they're proposing put in are not met correctly, we netting our overflow quarter on all properties that surround the proposed areas worse.
I didn't look at that, so I can't completely answer that accurately. Just my general impression is that if there was no modification of the base of the design, it probably would overflow and wouldn't really contain the water the way it's supposed to.
So if that were to overflow based on a period of design or calculation, that indeed, some rule of mine would affect all properties?
That's quite possible. I can't answer it completely.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
My name's Paul Ranelli, 20th, Bird Tribe, and you've pre-located this for a... Yes, I have. Mr. Lomoriad, a question for you concerning the master plan, which continually seems to be addressed. In the master plan on page twenty-eight, it says Taylor Lane Cherry Tree Farm Road, Palmer Avenue. Taylor Lane is an unimproved road approximately thirty-three feet wide, serves as a cut through for vehicle trips between Route Thirty-Five and Edrich and Porter. The road intersects Route Thirty-Five and Cherry Tree Farm Road, jutting at Atlantic Cut Angle. Consideration should be given towards the physical realignment of Taylor Lane to eliminate this unsafe condition. Taylor Lane should be relocated so as to intersect Route Thirty-Five directly across from Palmer Avenue or Cherry Tree Farm Road. The township should work jointly with the State Department of Transportation, as well as adjacent property owners, determining their cost. Right now, question for you, how can you determine whether that's a collector road based on the fact that we're looking at the master plan and says it's either Palmer Avenue or Cherry Tree Farm Road? And the applicant continually cites Cherry Tree Farm Road and Taylor Lane, but not Palmer Avenue as a consideration? Is there a flaw in the master plan in that?
I think the master plan gives a general concept of moving the road and reconstructing and realigning. The master plan, the way it lists and has that road in at the present moment, is not under the realign, the realign, reconstructed alignment. So the way it shows it in the master plan at the present time as a local road is the way it was in there prior to any improvements, in the description with the dirt road, et cetera. Now, once you realigned it, reconstructed, removed it, and then in addition to that, you added this substantial development, the volumes and everything else changed, and it changes to a collector road.
See, so based on what you just said, then the argument that Taylor Lane is a collector road or a local road, basically becomes, well, actually from the local road, it becomes more like, it doesn't exist the way it's described now on the, in the master plan of that intersection. So I'm not sure how anybody could classify it as a local road or collector road, or actually basically a local road anymore, when it doesn't exist. Is there a comment?
I agree with you as well, as the guidelines in federal aid system for designating system, designating roadways as either local arterials or collector street, says that once the road is gonna be reconstructed, realigned, and large developments go in, then the new ADT should be calculated, and then the modification just assistance should be made.
So assume there's no way that the master plan can take that into account?
No, because it didn't estimate what the future ADTs would be, it didn't look at the, it did not, the master plan did not estimate what the new ADT would be, and it didn't conclude as part of the realignment and reconstruction, the redevelopment of a large, a large residential development on both sides of Taylor Lane with the volumes that would be, would be, would be expected to be over twenty-five hundred vehicles a day approximately.
Could I just ask that, Mr. Lomoriad, Mr. Winksman? Why don't you just give a couple, a quick little sense of what the master plan is? I just, um, I don't want people to leave it the impression when you met, this gentleman mentioned, is there a flaw in the master plan? I think, I think everyone needs to make sure they understand what that document is.
It's a policy document required by statute in the municipal land use law that has certain required elements, circulation plan, housing plan, and then you sell them, things like that. But the point worth thought, is it a tool for the base, the township zoning ordinance is landing here, this is upon, as other agencies as well, primarily in there to support the zoning letting, this help guide capital growth, other issues as well. And if there is a planning, in this case here, it seems to be also referred to within the ordinance, a little factor that is part of what's like the rules.
I just wanted to make sure, I know Jason used to wear out.
So the zoning ordinance...
There was a little confusion as to what the master plan was.
There's a zoning ordinance that guides this ward, and that's adopted by the township committee. This ward adopted the master plan, it becomes a planning, and you can develop another ordinance.
And for clarification, the master plan was comprehensively reviewed and adopted in two thousand and four, there have been at least three reexaminations since that date, and at least, at least one update.
And I guess I would add, if I may, that the master plan was setting up the principal arterials, collectors, and local streets. And one of the reasons that, one of the reasons that is done is because federal aid is allowed to be provided for the federal government on principal arterials primarily, because there's not enough funds really to go from interstate principal arterials and then to collectors. So those roadways are identified by the municipalities, brought accepted by the county and the MPO, and then they're used to obtain federal aid funds. And basically, I was setting up those things for the entire state of New Jersey, New York, Connecticut, as part of my previous job in the past as director of planning. So basically, it works its way into the transportation improvement program, which is where the municipalities list all their projects that they plan to fund, and the requirement to have the, on the federal aid system and the urban principal arterials and the arterial collector system is set up so that you can get federal funds on those projects, on those roadways.
Any other questions?
Next, I'll call people, stop, thank you.
Mr. Lomoriad, your testimony about the board's, told you about, something about your study, God?
How do?
And your full name, sir?
Peter G. Steck, S T E C K.
Your birth?
Eighty Maplewood Avenue, Maplewood, New Jersey.
And for the record, you're a professional planner in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And you offer him as a planning expert?
Yes, sir.
And I'm sure Mr. Shumadis is familiar with Mr. Steck?
Then are you familiar, no objection to this call?
Oh, we'll accept this call.
Then, Mr. Stenchell, office, confidential, if you want to, I guess you could. Now, this, what, what, your question, how long you been practicing this in the state of New Jersey, at the Fox, how many boards, agencies, and superior courts have you testified before?
I received my license in nineteen seventy-six, and I have testified in approximately a hundred and seventy municipalities, in several state agencies, and in, I think, a superior court in eight counties.
Now, you were retained by me to possibly present planning testimony with regard to this particular application, were you not?
That's correct.
Now, prior to your coming here this evening, did you have occasion to either be present at a planning or hearing, in which testimony was given by the applicant, or if you were not present, did you review and read all of the transcripts of the previous hearings which I provided to you?
I was present at the last hearing and heard the testimony, plus I did review the transcripts that you presented.
Now, what else did you do with regard to documentation, which is before the planning order?
I looked at the site and the surrounding area, I reviewed the master plan and the zoning ordinance, and I also looked at other documents, such as the residential site improvement standards.
Did you also review the engineering plans, which were submitted by the applicant in this matter?
I did.
Now, Mr. Steck, recognizing that your office is located at George Grove, Jersey, do you have occasion to testify before various boards located within, along with the Ocean County?
Yes.
Have you testified in the township of Middletown on previous occasions?
I have.
Are you familiar with the topography, as well as the makeup of the road base systems within the township of Middletown?
Well, I'm, I'm more familiar with the ones that are in the subject area than I am in the other rest of the municipality.
Okay, fine. Now, with regard to the application which is before you, have you formed opinions with regard to the suitability of the site as proposed, take into consideration the master plan of the township of Middletown, as well as the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
And what are, what are your findings and or conclusions concerning that?
Okay. As the board is aware, one of the issues that has been raised is what is the setback from the new Taylor Lane? And basically, the municipal ordinance for this zone says that you can have a ten-foot setback if it's a local street, but if it's a collector street, there should be a fifty-foot setback. And the applicant has elected to do a setback voluntarily of twenty-five feet, but if you believe that this is just a local road, the applicant could by right put buildings ten feet back from the right of lane. That is closer than the other houses, single-family houses that are on Taylor Lane, and those other setbacks scale to approximately forty feet for some of the homes. So it's certainly gonna look, if the applicant elected to do ten feet back, it's certainly gonna be a very close setback compared to the rest of the area. What I want to emphasize is that the classification of roads into arterial and collector and local is what's called the functional classification. It's how do they work? If something is in design and does carry a lot of traffic, that's different from a local road. The local road, the prime function is to provide access to abutting property. So the, the preeminent example of a local road is a cul-de-sac, because you don't have any through traffic at all, the only traffic that's generated is from the abutting roads. As you get more and more feeders into this one road, any road, it tends to have a higher function, and in fact, when it travels between municipalities, it's called an arterial, and obviously kind of parallel after the body, an artery versus a vein, whatever, versus a capillary. So what I wanted, my first conclusion is that the road that is Taylor Lane, as shown in the map and the master plan, is the road as it currently exists. It doesn't show it relocated in any way, although the municipality wanted improvements, that doesn't answer the question. What has happened here is that in the course of reviewing this application and interacting with the state, there is now gonna be a, a major new intersection reconfigured that goes right into Taylor Lane. So we have on the other side, well, first of all, it connects with an arterial street, and on the other, which is classified in your master plan as a primary arterial, and on the other side of the intersection, that's a secondary arterial. So this street now is gonna connect to two types of arterials. And simply as indicated by Mr. Lomoriad, the number of cars that are expected to travel on this amounts, makes it a collector street, makes it more than a local street, and that is based on several definitions. And the, the whole theme of this is when you have a lot of traffic, you don't want buildings close to the property line. There are safety issues, there are issues of aesthetics, it will look obviously quite different from the single-family setbacks in the area. So I focus on the word functional classification. If, if this current alignment that's proposed was not shown in the master plan, so this is something new, it will function as a collector road, meaning it will have that volume of traffic that makes it under several definitions a collector road. The theme of your zoning ordinance is that when you have a busier road, you should pull the buildings back by at least fifty feet. So in my opinion, a fair interpretation of the ordinance acknowledging that Taylor Lane is proposed to be different than what it was shown on the master plan, is that a fifty-foot setback is required. The fact that there's a lot of traffic on the new Taylor Lane also has an impact on the site design. You would think that there would be sidewalks along Taylor Lane, so that people wouldn't have to walk in the street. The applicant is only proposing a short section of sidewalk, because apparently he want, they want to allow people on the east side of the development to walk across to get to the pool on the west side. But the answer is everything, everyone else in terms of walking along the street is ignored, because there are no sidewalks that are proposed. That's not a good design, to have the, the community facilities for this development segregated by a road that is functionally a collector road, that's a lot of traffic that will cross, there are no signalized intersection, there are no stop signs. The answer is there's a safety issue that clearly services because of that. A second important feature is the fact that part of this property is in Homedale. One point four seven acres are in Homedale. And if you look at the public notice, the public notice talks about that acreage and the lot and lot number in Homedale. If you look at the engineering plans, you'll see the setbacks are proposed, assuming that land in Homedale is part of the subject property. If you look at the design, you will see that if the detention basin pretends that the whole property is in, it is all in Middletown in terms of applying setbacks to the detention basin. That property in Homedale is in a different zone, it's in an old thirty zone that permits single-family homes, and the master plan says it's intended to recognize the existing single-family homes, and it permits offices. It does not permit multifamily use. If you take away the one point four seven acres from the thirty-one point oh one acres that the applicant says the tract is, you are under thirty acres, you are twenty-nine point five four acres. So the applicant has a substandard block size for this use, unless you pretend that that land in Homedale is part of Middletown. If you also, again, so there, it's important for two reasons. One, the applicant needs it to get to the thirty acres. The applicant is applying the fifty and seventy-five foot setbacks as if that land were in Middletown. The applicant has a detention basin out of the setbacks, it would not be out of the setbacks unless it owned that land in Homedale and pretended it was part of Middletown. Those facts, in my opinion, tell me that that part of the property, that one point four seven acres in Homedale, is part and parcel of this multifamily development. And although the applicant is not putting a multifamily building there, it is being used to count the acreage and the setbacks and the position of the detention basin. So in my opinion, a devariance is needed from the adjacent municipality. At the very minimum, this must be conditioned upon that, but the applicant cannot assume, because this board has no jurisdiction in the next municipality, it cannot assume automatically that setbacks are measured from that far property line. It does trigger a variance, several variances in my opinion, and most notably, an acreage under thirty acres, also a setback to the detention basin that's deficient. There is a case that was referred to called the Kinder Command case, and this, this was in Oradel. And as I recall the facts, there was a commercial development being proposed... And as I recall the facts, there was a commercial development being proposed, and this was in a zone as opposed to across the municipal boundary line. An applicant was proposing the development in a commercial zone and bought an adjacent single-family zone and said, "I'm not doing anything there. I'm not putting any pavement. I'm just using it as a buffer. I'm not building anything, I'm paving it." But the court ruled that that involved a de- or a use variance, because the fact that the applicant was using that land in the adjacent zone, it allowed the applicant to have more intensive development on the remainder of the lot. And in this instance, we have now a substandard acreage, under 30 acres, we have setbacks that would be different, so that in my opinion, there are additional variances that have not been addressed by the applicant, and I believe that any approvals, assuming that the applicant could present testimony, which the applicant has not, this would have to be subject to a use variance granted by the adjacent municipality. So there is a central issue. In summary, I believe a variance is needed from the 50-foot setback requirement. And forget the law for a minute. The question is, do you want buildings, does it make sense to have buildings 20 feet, 25 feet back, 27 feet back from the right of way, when the rest of the road system has larger setbacks for single-family houses that are smaller than these buildings? And in a situation where you have this much traffic and no sidewalks along Taylor Road, that's not good planning. I think it is, does involve a variance from the 50-foot requirement, and I think that while the applicant has not addressed this, in my opinion, it was difficult or impossible to justify that kind of a setback variance, given the volume of traffic. Again, the applicant has totally ignored the property that's in the adjacent municipality, which is a fundamental issue. Variances are triggered because of that municipal boundary line. The applicant has not addressed that, and I think in the worst-case scenario, this application has to be made subject to approval of that part of the site that is essentially accessory, has a multifamily character to it, because it is used in part and parcel of the subject property. So for those reasons, I think that there is no evidence on the record now that can allow the board to approve this application as presented, and in fact, I think there is substantial detriment if you allow buildings 25 feet back from the new Taylor Lane, recognizing that it's going to functionally be a collector's street.
Now, did you examine the site itself?
Yes.
And with regard to the plans, which determine where and back the amenities, now, by understanding this, this is basically the site being put forward as one integrated multifamily housing project, correct?
Yes.
Now, does it make a determination as to where the amenities on this property will be located?
Well, there's a pool that is located on the western half of the site, and it can only be reached by crossing the new Taylor Lane.
Now, there's also a, there's also a top one, is there not?
Yes.
And on top of that, there's also a small, I believe, community center.
Right next to the pool, yeah.
Now, is it your understanding that the townhouses on both the west side as well as the east side will be walked in for sale to individuals of all ages?
Yes, you can't discriminate.
Young families as well as old families?
Correct.
And young families normally have children, do they not?
Well, some do and some don't.
Having said that, for someone who has baby children.
Speaking about you.
Do you have a comment in regard to safety issues with regard to whether it be young children or mothers and baby marriages crossing over Taylor Lane to get to these amenities?
In my opinion, it is an unsafe situation where you have, you know, normal accoutrements such as a pool or a community building that has to be crossed without any mechanism such as a stop sign or a traffic light.
And under the ordinance, there have to be provisions for these amenities, do they not?
I don't recall the specifics, but it is typically part of an application, and indeed, I'm sure any purchaser of a condominium unit is going to look at that as part of the price that I have access, that that purchaser has access to the pool as well as the low and moderate income units.
Now, did you listen to the comments of Mr. Stack, Mr., I'm sorry, Litmorea, both regard to the absence of sidewalks throughout, for the most part, throughout the site?
Yes.
Is there a comment as to that?
My focus frankly is on Taylor Lane, because it's going to be a public street, and there will clearly be a greater volume of traffic on it than exists today, and in my opinion, the residential site improvement standards would require, I believe, sidewalks on both sides of Taylor Lane.
Now, let me get this project as a play, would it be fair to say that with regard to the proposed density of this project, that many of, much of the relief which the applicant is seeking with regard to determination of Taylor Lane as a local rather than the collector's street, with regard to the size of the detention basin on the line, with regard to the absence of sidewalks throughout the site, is really driven by a desire to have a higher intensity of use on the property?
That's correct, in my opinion. There are wetlands there, but obviously, the applicant has put in more units than I think warrants approval because of the defects in the design. I'd like also to note that without the 1.4 acres in Home Del, the density, the gross density is over eight units per acre. So RSIS says that without that Home Del portion, it is classified as an intensive development, and that's what drives the need for sidewalks.
And, please.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions on the issue of this land in Home Del. I don't know if you were here, Mr. Stack, or read in the transcript, but I think early on, I was of the same opinion as you expressed, that the land in Home Del would need approvals over there, you can't count, there's a lot there, et cetera. And I went back, and to my surprise, and I think I mentioned it on the record, there was a case, Nunziano versus Edgewater, 1988 case. And I read that, and I came back and I recall, you know, going back earlier to the sheriff meeting, and said, "I'm surprised," but I came to a different conclusion after reading that case. So I.
I'm familiar, I think that, well, my recollection is the Nunziano case had something to do with extracting improvements, if I remember correctly, in that case.
That's another one of the same, the same, similar game.
Okay.
No, no, you're right, no, no, there's, the exactions were, you're right. But that, and that's what that case basically has been cited for, that you can have exactions on the municipality. But within it, they also talked about 0.3 acres of the tract was located in the adjacent panel. And they allowed that and said that the area could include that, even though it's in a different panel. They also cite from another case, CIO CON, Sacoome versus Franklin Lakes, another 1988 case. And that would talk about setback requirements and said that you could use the distance in another town as part of the setback.
My understanding of the cases is that under a certain set of factual situations, you may be entitled, you know, to a variance, let's say, if your backyard extended into the other town, and I know that there is one that suggests that you don't stop at the municipal boundary line, because it's not the same as a property line. But in this case, we do have a property line, which happens to coincide with the municipal boundary lines, I understand it. So I think there may be a different set of facts, but I think that it does trigger a variance, and it has a practical issue, and that the applicant is even within.
Well, let me go back.
Yep.
Okay. I recognize that you may not agree with what I just said, but I did agree with what I just said, but first time around, okay? And I mean, when you read it, we call that under the facts and circumstances presented, where a boundary line transects, transsects a property located within two municipalities. The rear yard setback requirements of one municipality refer to the distance that the third lane is located from the rear lot line located in the adjoining municipality rather than from the municipal boundary line. That's from Sacoome cited in Nunziano.
Look, I mean, so I think, I think we've gone past the touch, but this municipal boundary line does not transect the lot. It coincides with the lot line.
Well, because there's, wait. It transects this property, and the only reason there's two lots, because there's a lot in Home Del and a lot in Middletown.
I think that makes an difference.
Well, there would have to be, there's, in my, for mine, I mean, I've seen this situation with this.
You always have to have the lot and lot in each town. That's not, that's not the case. I have seen municipalities that simply, the assessors agree that, you know, I will assess this property.
That's an assessment, that's an assessment issue.
But, but in those instances, the lot line does not necessarily stop at the municipal boundary line.
Here's my recommendation to the board. Issue, and my recommendation to the board is, they don't have to get approvals from Home Del. The setbacks are measured from their property line inclusive of both towns. The area is better by including both towns. Not what I thought originally, but I did my own research on it, and that's what I came up with, and I think I said that about six or eight months ago.
Next question, Mr. Trump. Let me, there's a Nunziano case saying that you don't have to go to the adjacent municipality if in fact you're utilizing portions of that property for your project. And having earth moving, having foundations built, or having.
Well, no, but, but the testimony. First of all, is, are there, my, my understanding of the testimony in this record so far has been that, you're wrong, I don't know, there's nothing going on in the property in Home Del?
I don't believe that's right.
Well, then somebody would put that in the record.
Well, I think if you're, and I'm not being critical, but if you, if you recall my post-examination of Mr. Kofler, I guess he was someone who made some, proportions on that property in Home Del are being used as a, I believe, a buffer areas in transition area with certain permitting. Where do you put?
I don't want to get into the details. The issue is, is anything going on in Home Del? I mean, I think this testimony so far has been no. Is it being used for buffer averaging or transition?
Yes.
Okay, apparently so, but there's, there's nothing physically happening to the property. But not being, earth not being moved, berms aren't being built, the basin doesn't extend, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that's what they represented. I don't know if that's the facts or not.
That shouldn't be there, where the question, if they didn't have the benefit of, you don't have this.
You're free to make your argument. All saying as to that argument, I think it's, we're past that, and I, and I admit that one can have a different opinion, because I didn't.
If, if we're all within Middletown, and Middletown had the same 030 zone that Home Del had?
Yeah.
The Kinder Mac case says, that's a board adjustment case, because multifamily use is not permitted in the 030 zone, so that's a fundamentally different fact. This use is not permitted in Home Del.
That's correct. I agree. What's, if you, but, look, I, I read the basis, and that's what they make court score, and that's what we make our limits. But as to this proceeding before this board, although that was not the answer that I thought I was going to find, in my legal opinion, the area can include the area in Home Del, the lot area, that if they are, if they need a use variance in Home Del, that's something for Home Del to tell them to go do, and not us, and the setbacks can be measured from the property down grade rather than the municipal down grade. That's what I read that case for D, and by the way, I've been wrong before.
What if, and I was wrong in my first impression, what if after this approval, the applicant goes to Home Del and proposes a development on 1.47 acres in Home Del?
But I think they said originally, it may not, they did say they were going to be restricted and wasn't going to be any development on the property. So I think that's what I'm saying, I think that if that particular issue, whether right, wrong, or indifferent, I think we're past that. Okay? At least that was my recommendation to the board, that I, I, I will tell you, the first time I was here, I had the exact same thoughts that you just expressed, and I spent an hour or so going through it, trying to find cases, and when I found that, I really didn't believe it, and then I kept on looking. And at the end of the day, I think that they, their argument is okay, they're not doing anything over there, yes, it's transition area, and you can make, you know, wanted to make that argument, I just don't know if that's a fair argument to make, and I would advise the board not to, that, I don't think we have the legal basis to base an opinion or a resolution on that, we just don't have strong enough legal support. So for one second, I mean, we can revisit it, I understand, if you have good opinions, but the matter of the law, I think there will be chaos. Now, whether or not somebody gets cited in Home Del for saying it's a use variance, I guess, but, you know, if they can use point, if Edgewater can count a third acre in the cliffside, we can count this.
The argument of that question, the approval, it may not commit abuse on the local property, will this group?
I don't think they'd grant an approval, and, and I guess it's an issue that someone might want to mitigate, but my advice to the board was that, based upon the research that I did, I don't think they mean that, they do not need variance in their plan, contrary to my initial dark reaction. And I think, I, I still don't get it. I still don't understand why you can count land in another town, but I ain't the adult group. They think he can? He can. And I couldn't find any case that contrary to that. Use, use, I grant you, this does not deal with use, but pretty close, pretty close. Because they're talking about it for density purposes, you know, the de-variance.
I think you can count.
Look, they didn't get their approval in Nunziano for other reasons, but, you know, but that wasn't, that wasn't the reason why they didn't get their approval. The elder division said you can't buy fire trucks or whatever, like that.
Any continuing?
I don't even feel that.
Well, okay, it's, it's funny, I'll leave that to the board. If there's public questions of Mr. Stack, you can do it tonight, or you can start that next time.
Well, let's do it, let's do it tonight, since, let's do it right now, Carl. Any public questions for Mr. Stack? This is fresh in everybody's mind. And we've got a very good tutorial on a lot of legal logistics for every layman here. Okay, then we should set up another meeting. You can carry, you can set up a board, and we would start that meeting with.
Terry, we're here to like Terry, we, we. I think Terry, like, here.
Just a, 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 aside from, as part of this, they, it's a general discussion. I mean, I don't know where he's coming from. Who waits, getting issues, is Mr. Stack available on that night?
He's not.
He's not, I'm with this little word. Neither one of your groups are available, I mean.
And the next agenda would be, would be open for January eighth. There'll be different members, there'll be different members on this board, definitely.
Please, if you guys all, please go outside closer. Because it's hard to call it, not for me, but the young lady sitting here. Does the board want to explore that? I mean, I don't want to... Okay, so just November fourteenth. That, we went through the calendar, and we had a tough time finding nights. But for, for that night, though, it would be, I would suggest that it would just be for limited purposes of cross-examination of these two witnesses. So that, I mean, you know, if, really, Mr. Key, he can't make it. I don't know if we need him that night. It's going to be very hard to find nights. I'll leave it up to you. That's the only night that we could identify in November. I don't recall what, we booked in December.
How do you feel about that, Mr.? I'm asking, fourteen?
I have to, fourteen.
During the day?
Sorry?
During the day?
During the day, but it's...
I have to see your face tonight. I'm not fine, I won't give it. It's a few, two days. I'm not trying to be difficult. Mr. Stack, say it out loud. Very good. Mr. Stack, or Mr. LeWardian, LeWardian, you're the one you were available on that night?
I have to be in Galway, which is a little bit of a high guess.
That same night? Can't you vote?
I'll try.
This is, this is one, I... Mr. LeWardian, can you make it on that night?
On the board?
Fourteen?
I have another meeting, I can see if I can.
All right, go, go, go. Well, I guess that's it, the board.
Well, we can always pull a little fuck, and, and, and...
Well, with all due respect, we was on the board of people and professionals here. That is, that sounds like a lovely idea, but that is not going to work. I also, I think I can speak for the rest of us. That's ridiculous.
Okay, so, I mean, there's other things on, on December fourth anyway. So in that... Ron? I'm sorry. Could, I know it's going out of order, but I'm just trying to come. You, you reserve so that you can put on a case from rebuttal?
Correct.
It's a little out of order, but you anticipate putting a case on from rebuttal? Or you want a cross-examination first?
I want a cross-examination.
All right, well, between, I guess we could carry for just notice purposes only to December four. Would be, and, and would be, it seems to me now that we not proceed on December four, because the witnesses aren't going to be here. And then, the only thing the board could do on that night would be that they carry jurisdiction to another meeting thereafter, whatever that may be, whether it's in this year or, I presume it's going to be extremely difficult to find a date in December, that it will work, but, but it's possible. And then, carry it to that night, or carry it into next year?
If we go into next year, we do have new members on the board. They will be, they will have to look at a lot of the old documents. And they must look at those documents before they can sit on the board and hear your case. And whether that can be done for January, I don't know. They would have the time, you know?
They don't have to listen to them before, they can start and...
They have to listen to them before they vote.
Before they vote.
And that, and that's quite a, many, many hours of listening, so...
We have transfers, which are easier to go through than listening. But they have to do that before there's any deliberation or vote taken, presumably, you know? Out of those, what happens?
We could have some kind of quorum in January? You know, minus any people from the board?
I don't think, we don't know. It doesn't matter, we don't know. Even if there's, even if there's, even if none of you are back there, the new board, be it for, you can hear this in January. They just couldn't decide it, because they weren't, they had, at that point, presumably, they wouldn't have gone back and either listened to page discs or read the transcripts. But there would be a quorum. If you do people, there'd be a quorum. Right, so, I mean, I think the best we're able to do right now is to say, carry it from the December or fourth meeting, with the potential that there would be another meeting before the end of the year, maybe. But we don't know. We're not going to, below that night. And if it's not on that night, then it's being carried for the organization meeting, which is January eight or nine.
And if I could just, for my clarification, it may be probably another result of, the next meeting will be, you'll get, you'll be the rebuttal to, or questioning, cross-examining, and then you may have a rebuttal, some.
That's correct.
Right, you have that option. Then, it will be open to the public for comment and on everything and anything.
Yes, correct.
So I'm just, myself, looking down the road on how many more meetings this might be and the time frame.
Yeah. No, that's different. It's going to be whatever it is, any. But certainly, it's at least one board. And, and maybe more. So December fourth, at this point in time, it's not going to be a, nothing's going to be done at night other than to carry it to another night to be determined that night. And so that would mean that the witnesses don't have to come. Presumably, even the attorneys are not going to have to come. All we're doing is carrying it to another meeting.
That's what you do.
Non-sensational?